And the D.
Deduction.
D. Doc. War. It's a difference between bells and the doc.
Deduction warrant is really federal state taxes.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
So we're gonna, it looks like six thirty in the dark, and we're gonna open the Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, gonna be standard pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for public comment?
Hi, I'm Beth Burton, twenty-one Balch Avenue, Chair of the Library Trust, Board of Trustees. So I'm here to ask the Board of Selectmen for time to meet with Town Council to have clarity on a director contract. The Vice Chair has been in communication with the Personnel Director, and we have guidance that the Massachusetts, from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, that we are, have to have a contract, mandatory contract. And Town Council said it would be fine without a contract because the Groveland Employee Policy Handbook covers that. So we just need to be clear as a board that why, why one governing body is telling us one thing and why another is telling us another thing, and we just want clarity and in writing. And, and, and BLC suggests that we all sit down, the Board of Selectmen, the Personnel Director at Town Council, and all get on the same page. And they might be able to send somebody, they're not sure, they're a little short-staffed right now.
May I just?
Sure, go ahead.
So I spoke with Ann McCann, it's on the Board's next agenda. Not to meet with Town Council, though, we're gonna try and get something in writing from Town Council. We can't afford to have them come out here. So we'll have them review, I sent her Ann's email, and I've asked them to provide us a written response.
So-
For the Board to take under advisement.
Because we wanna be able to move forward with a, a contract, or with a library candidate, a director candidate, at that meeting also. So do you think it'll be available at, for that meeting, or ahead of that meeting?
I'm hoping it'll be ahead of that meeting, yes.
Can I ask you a question? I know when we had these discussions before, you don't have to have the candidate, you have time, it's not like you, you're up against a wall with the candidate, you have time.
We're in the process of interviewing candidates right now, so this is our third interview on Wednesday, so we would like to be able to make an offer, or, you know, advance a name to the Board of Selectmen for hire, for your twenty-seventh meeting.
Okay. But what I'm saying, I agree with what you're trying to say, but I'm saying is it's not like you're up against a wall, because they say you can operate without-
Lose candidates if we don't move.
Oh, you're gonna lose a candidate.
But, but you really shouldn't have a contract until the Board appoints, it would be a point.
Points anyway, it would be the twenty-seventh, but you wanna be able to, to offer a candidate a verbal offer, or a, you know, contingent upon ratification.
Right.
So we need to know what we're offering.
Right, so if you get the answer on it before this meeting, we should be able to take care of that.
I, I would really like it to be before, otherwise it, you know, then, then if we're waiting till the twenty-seventh, if somebody gives notice, you know, and then we just keep pushing back, one of the goals would be to start, you know, with the new fiscal year.
You've already asked the questions?
Yep.
So I, I didn't have that update, the last I knew is-
Yeah, I emailed Ann back on Friday and said I sent it to Town Council.
I saw that, you copied me on.
Yeah, I copied you, I think you'll copy it on a bet.
She copied me on, I saw it.
That, that you asked them to send it back in writing?
Yep, that I, that it was gonna be on the Board's next agenda, I would get something from Town Council, so that the Board could-
And I think she even, somehow she said like apologize, or something like, I remember reading it.
Yeah.
So hopefully if we have it the next, okay, we'll get you the response as fast as we can get it.
Okay.
'Cause I know they were working on it, I did, I did see that email.
Excellent.
All right?
Thank you.
That's gonna work okay for you?
As long as, as long as we have it in writing, you know, it's, 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 it's very, you know, it's very disconcerting to have had contracts from the same Town Council in the, the pre, not the current past, the most recent past director did not have a contract, but the two before that had contracts. So, you know, what's right? In the, in the last five years, six years, we've had two contracts and one no contract, so, you know, I want, we wanna do what's right.
So you'd rather have a contract?
I can totally understand the challenges of a contract, because, you know, is it more an agreement, or is, you know, or with the Board of Trustees and the Director, or is it, you know, a contract like the Finance Director and the Police Chief have, so that they're different than the town policy handbook?
Right, right. So what I was saying, as long as you get a contract, whatever you get, if you end up, that's the route you go, you want a contract?
Right, it would be, it would be more ideal to have a contract.
Obviously make sure you have a clause in there that you can get out of it.
Right.
And you don't have to pay-
And it would be a contract, you know, the Board of Selectmen are the hiring body, so I can imagine that it would be, which it has not been in the past, a joint contract between the Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen.
Right, that's what-
Because the, there's a fully elected Board in between.
Yep.
So I could see, I could imagine that being more the way-
That would make sense. But you also wouldn't wanna get into a contract where, let's just say it was a three-year contract, or whatever, and that person doesn't like the job and decides to leave, now they hold us for the amount of money because it wasn't written right, that's all I'm saying.
Right, which is then, you know, another reason why Town Council would have to review the contract.
Right, exactly, right.
And we've also had that same discussion, the same Town Council has said it has to be a three-year contract, one year, and the next year to say, no, you can only have one year contract. So how can we waffle?
Right.
The laws haven't changed.
Right.
How can we waffle?
Well, but if we ask that question, if you go to a contract, the length of the contract also-
Yep, go ahead, Dan.
Do you know of any, you know, authority that requires a three-year contract? I mean, what, what governing body would do that?
No, no, I don't-
It seems like an interference with contract-
So I don't, I don't know if, I don't know, all's I know is that historically we have had a three-year contract and we had a one-year contract.
I think if you have somebody know, or you try it out somebody, you wanna go with a short duration, play it by ear.
Yep, yep, it's always renewable.
Right, do one, one year, and then do the next one two years.
Then up another year, and once you get them-
Right, so we just wanna do with the, the right thing, yeah.
Person's here to stay, then you give them a three year.
Right, if you know after one year you got a good person, it's a keeper, then go for another two years.
But I wouldn't do a three-year contract on a nine-year.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that was another point that was not clear. You know, one year we were had three-year, and one year we weren't allowed to have a three-year.
Right. Well, hopefully we'll have them answers as quick as we can for you, sooner than later.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
See you next time.
All right, so, no one, no one else for public comment? All right, Dan, can I get a motion to approve the warrants for-
I'll make the motion to approve the payroll warrant sixteen dash fifty-one in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that motion, all in favor to approve?
All right.
Yes, okay.
Next up, I'll make a motion to approve the deduction warrant, is the, which is the related taxes taken out of the payroll, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred five dollars and two cents.
Second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for bill warrant, so the bills for the town, other than the payroll, sixteen dash fifty-one, one million, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Two million bucks.
All set, thanks, Dan.
Just one more, the three hundred dollar deduction warrant.
Oh.
D. Doc. War, sixteen-
It's good.
Slepping. What's the C. says?
I'm sorry?
What's the C.?
It's 'cause we have an additional warrant, that was actually the, we did a check in advance for Natural Heritage to submit that permit after last meeting, so she did a check in advance, so that's just an additional warrant number.
Gotcha. All right, so I'm gonna do a further deduction warrant, and the amount of three hundred dollars, number sixteen dash forty-nine C., with Denise's explanation.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all set. Now, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have appointments, we have an appointment of Robert J.
Raimondi.
Raimondi, a fourteen Gardner Street Groveland, to the volunteer position of a dock master. Can I get a motion to accept?
May I just make one point?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just wanna clarify, the reason it's only June thirteenth, twenty sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, is he will be on the full annual appointment list that the Chief sends over at the next meeting.
Okay.
But we just wanted to get them started as soon as possible. So we're appointing them immediately, they will start, but they will be reappointed on his full list.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept that?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept, we appoint Robert Raimondi from June thirteenth till June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, volunteer position of dock master.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill, any further discussion?
You have a question?
Go ahead.
Is, is there a stipend that goes along with that? It's a hundred percent volunteer, no pay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a discussion, and we'll vote on that one.
Did we get a second?
It was not seconded.
I thought, did Bill second it?
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, I was wrong.
Bill seconded.
Bill seconded, okay. So no further discussion, and can I get a vote, all in favor on Robert J. Raimondi?
Yes.
All set, okay. So we have another appointment of Nicholas R.C. Tullius, of nine, Cranton Ave., Groveland, to the volunteer position of the dock master, effective June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Dan seconded?
You blocking me out there? I've been blocked.
Oops.
Huh?
So we have a motion, can you second?
I was gonna second it, yeah.
Bill, you want a second?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion?
It's back, Billy. They just axed me out, Bill, okay, they deleted me. Can I go home?
All right, so, no other discussion?
Do we have a second on that?
I thought Bill seconded it. And we'll vote on Nicholas, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so we have discussion and possible vote. Sam Joslin, Building Inspector, to present a revised electrical permit schedule. Sam, come on up.
Good evening, Selectman O'Neill, Sam Joslin, the Building Inspector, I don't think we've had a chance to meet yet.
Not formally, nice to meet you. How are you?
Good, good. So with the proposed software that we're looking at for the beginning of the year, and looking at trying to get a fee schedule that fits into the software, and check, taking a look at what we had existing, our existing electrical permit fee schedule is four pages long, and very confusing. And it still includes things like phone booths, I'm pretty sure we don't get too many of those being installed anymore. So I thought it was time to update, so that it was a little easier to, to read, hopefully you guys got the, the package. Basically, the residential is gonna stay the same for new addition, and everything else is just gonna fall under all other. The only change in that is, it actually reduces the fee for solar installs by fifty dollars, but again, just makes it very clear, it's either two hundred, one hundred, or fifty bucks, it's not multiple pages. Commercial is pretty close to the same, our common hundred to four hundred amp service, reduced, you know, I, I looked at what the average cost was, we're reducing it by about five bucks. The larger services go up slightly. I know that the Board has not been a fan of going up, so if you want me to go down, I have no problem with that. I just did it so that it made, you know, was easy to, to look at and make sense. All of the permits would be fifty, which is basically our minimum for having the inspector out. And then I did add the mass general law language of double fee for work started before retaining the permit is, is subject to double the fees. So really not a lot of big changes. Again, just, just trying to get rid of a whole lot of confusing language. I mean, we were going in and, you know, for motors, you know, charging a fee and then a dollar per thousand, or, or per wattage, and trying to calculate motor sizes, and it just, it, it doesn't make any sense to, to be spending the time doing that. So I did wanna simplify, I saw Dan was, was not, if you'd like, on the six hundred to thousand amp, I had it at one fifty, the current average is one twenty-five, I can leave it at the one twenty-five if you see fit. And the thousand to fourteen went from, the average was two thirty-seven fifty, I rounded up to two fifty, but again, whatever, whatever the Board's pleasure is on those two, two that I rounded up, I will be glad to, to take that.
Does anyone have any input?
I had some questions.
Sure.
Is there a dollar value, a price of the job fee in addition to these charges?
No, these are flat, flat charges. Pretty much your-
So if it's a ten thousand dollar electrical upgrade, it's just a flat fee. I don't know what some of these things cost, you know, fourteen hundred amp service.
Yeah, and those, those are your, your typical commercial. Most of those, you know, we, we end up having an electrical engineer that do design for projects that would be of that size. So it's really handholding the electrical inspector and the engineer go out together and, and do the, the look at. So his responsibility, the electrical inspector's responsibility, doesn't change a whole lot, whether it's a big job, little job. It's really ensuring that the electrical engineer did his job, and that everything looks reasonable.
I guess what I'm driving at is there a correlation between the, your department's involvement in inspection versus what the fees are, you know, if the fees double, for instance, does it take more time and effort on your department, or is it just, you know, how do you base the fees, you know, why would, why would one be a hundred and one be two fifty?
Just time, so-
So there's a correlation of time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So like a, a new dwelling, which is two hundred, takes more time than an addition. And then the all other permits are usually smaller type things, you know, adding, you know, equipment, or maybe a bathroom remodel, something, something small like that, that's pretty much a quick in and out type of inspection.
So whether it costs a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, it's one, one permit fee?
Correct.
Good? Yeah, I got one question for Sam.
Sure.
Just looking at this, how about a standby generator in a, a commercial building or, or in a dwelling? It, it, I don't see it listed here, maybe, maybe I'm just not reading it right?
Yep, your residential, it would just be under the all other, so it's fifty bucks for him, them to go out and take a look at. Under your commercial, it's gonna depend on that service size.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
They still have cigarette machines, it's on the top.
Is it, yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought, it was probably time to update, you know. I haven't seen a cigarette machine or a telephone booth in a, a little bit.
Bill, do you have anything, you good?
I'm good. I'm all for streamlining everything and making things simpler and easier to use. And if it makes your job easier, and as long as it doesn't inhibit safety, then it's a win-win, right?
Yeah, no, it, really, it comes down to what ends up happening, is we get applications with checks submitted, and the checks are frequently wrong, because it's difficult to figure out based on the current schedule. With the new schedule, it's, it's pretty cut and dried, it's, you know, if you can't figure that out, I don't think you should be playing with electricity.
Right, so it should save you time to do more important things, is what I'm getting at, right?
Exactly.
I'm all for it.
Okay, anyone have any further discussion?
So, just in summation, so it's not an overall increase here?
No, no, it was, like I said, most everything stayed the same or went down, with the exception of those two larger service sizes that I did round up.
The purpose is to clean this up, it's confusing, it's not user-friendly on either side of the desk, and it's not a fee generator.
Exactly. No, no, and, and most, if not, you know, probably in the high ninety percentile of our, our fees for electrical permits are residential. As you know, we don't have a huge commercial base, so the majority are gonna be in those top three lines, either two hundred, one hundred, or fifty, which is, you know, like I said, if you can't figure that out, you know, you're probably gonna have a hard time telling which, which lot, wire to touch.
Yeah.
So my only question is, and it's kinda stupid, but anyway, you are the Building Inspector, and these are electrical inspections, only because you're doing the software, is that's what?
Well, when I took over, our, our electrical permits and plumbing permits were elsewhere in town, and-
So you took them all over?
I brought them all into the Building Department, just, again, to try and streamline and avoid confusion.
Perfect, okay. I don't have any other questions. So can I get a motion to accept Sam's proposal?
I've just got one quick-
Two quick, I'm sorry.
If you even know, six hundred and a thousand amp services are big, you know, anything, like you said, residential is two hundred, so you've got a big complex. Besides, I'm thinking A.W. Chesterton, who has, who would have a service that big?
You might have some odds in it, like we got the laundromat that's down at the center, they probably have a large service that would exceed, you know, your, your basics, that probably higher, but-
So it's not Joe and Mary down the street, we're talking industries, or we're talking businesses?
No, probably the largest residential I've seen is a four hundred amp service, and even that wouldn't fall into the commercial fee schedule, it would stay in the residential fee schedule. So even if I was a residence and I wanted to have a six hundred amp service, it would still be under the residential. So that, that doesn't change, it's primarily based on use and then the fee.
Great, appreciate it. Good?
Okay, all right, so now we'll try and get a motion to accept Sam's proposal on the electrical fee schedule, permit fee schedule. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the revised electrical permit fee schedule.
Okay, someone want a second it?
Second.
No further discussion? And all in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming, Sam, appreciate it. Yep. Okay, so we're a little bit, still had a schedule for the, the hearing, so we'll move down, and we'll do the votes of the Board. We have the minutes from the May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, has everyone read them, and good to vote on them?
They, they look, they look to be in order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes from May, the May sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded, and any further discussion? And all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. A vote and sign that, what do we got here? Is that two hundred, two hun-
Two million, four hundred and ten thousand.
Two million, four hundred and ten thousand, bond anticipation note for the water main project and fire truck and police dispatch center. I, anyone make a motion?
So I have to say that you have, someone has to read that whole vote that I outlined in the package, 'cause it's required under bond council.
Okay.
Yeah, so the page that starts with the voted, and then there's, so four paragraphs, someone really should read that.
All right.
If you approve, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I, I have a question. The, the Dispatch Center, wasn't that last, last go-around, not this go-around?
So it was approved at Town Meeting last year, but the project didn't start until fiscal sixteen, which is what we're in.
Okay.
So that's really the only one we had to borrow before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
The fire truck and the water main project really aren't until fiscal seventeen.
Yep.
But we save money by grouping those things together.
Okay.
Which is why we didn't borrow the water main last year, we had nothing else to borrow, I mean, the, sorry, the dispatch, I had nothing else to borrow with it.
Okay.
So I purposely waited until after Town Meeting, so that anything that needed to be borrowed, to cut down on costs.
All right, makes sense.
So this is just a temporary one-year note, we actually got a really good rate of one point two percent from Century Bank. We will go out to borrow it permanently next year. So once we actually have the equipment, we know the true cost of the fire truck and things like that, that way it'll factor into what we borrow permanently next year.
Okay, a quick question, will that, will that number change, or is that gonna be locked in for the life of the loan, or does that vary?
The one point two is just one year.
One year, so that could be up at the end of the, the term of these, they could be up four, five?
Correct, because when we go out to borrow this permanently, the fire truck will, in the, the fire truck and the water mains will be at a twenty-year borrowing.
Right.
The police dispatch will only get a five-year borrowing, so depending on where the rates are, usually the higher the amount that we borrow, the lower the rate is, 'cause people wanna invest and get a big chunk of municipal bonds. So at that point, we'll know what the, when we borrow permanently, we'll know what the entire life of the interest will be, on all of those.
That's with Century Bank?
Yes.
What if I have a loan with Century Bank?
It's okay, this-
Can't vote on it?
This is the municipal division, completely separate.
You're good.
Not a conflict.
It's not a conflict.
I understand the business, really.
All right.
How quickly do you think we can turn this around?
We close tomorrow, I mean Wednesday, that's why I have to-
Right, but that one point two is locked in for one year?
Yep.
There's already talk of the Fed raising the rate?
No, that's guaranteed, that's already, the one point two, we've accepted their bid, yep.
Right, 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 but this is for one year, and then we have to roll it into a twenty-year.
Yep.
How fast can that be done before rates?
We probably wouldn't borrow it again until next, until next June, to permanently finance it.
Even if we know that rates are going to escalate over the next twelve months, we couldn't find a way to lock in the, you know, earlier and get the lowest possible rate before?
Yes and no, it really, the Fed rates doesn't have a huge impact on municipal bonds, 'cause people always wanna buy them. So over the last ten years, they've always been relatively lower than, you know, your normal mortgages and things like that, they've always come in three, or three is probably the highest.
One point two percent?
So I don't really see it being an issue if it goes out a year, but I can talk to our financial advisor and see what they recommend. I mean, they're the ones that, you know, we, we plan this for the year, based on what they see coming down.
Right. Three years ago, I said this is great, 'cause I see interest rates going down, but now I see interest rates beginning to climb. So I'd like to see us lock in that twenty-year as quick as possible, before they escalate too much and it costs us too much money.
But we can't really borrow the fire truck permanently until we have a fire truck, because if the cost of the fire truck is only seven hundred and thirty thousand, we can't borrow seven fifty. So when we know what the true cost is, is when we have an idea of what we can borrow.
And I thought they had the truck already picked out and everything was all set, and-
But nothing's been signed, there's no agreements. So until that happens, we-
What's taking them so long? I thought they wanted this truck yesterday. Bob, where are you? Where's the, where's the number?
It should be seven fifty, but until things are signed and contracts are done, I can't guarantee that.
And the water mains?
The one point five million.
That's a hard number, or?
That's a hard number, yes.
That hard and fast, one point five million for the water mains?
One point five million? That's the number that we're budgeting right now, yeah. We're just starting the engineering process.
Not gonna go up or down significantly, down, I don't, significantly, I don't care.
Yeah, it can't, it can't increase, you know, we're hoping it's on the other end of that, and it decreases, but, you know, there's always contingency built into the, into the, into a project, so.
Okay, so the police is hard?
The police is done, the one sixty, that dispatch center is done and-
His one point five is hard, so we just gotta get Bob to give us a number. Okay,
all right. All right, Ed, do you wanna try and get that, do you want us to read that now?
It's up to you.
Because we have a few minutes for the hearing, so-
Yep, it's up to you.
All right, Ed, you wanna read that?
Just the, uh-
The highlighted section, right?
The five sections that say voted, and then further voted. So that should be your motion.
So we're gonna get a motion to accept the highlighted vote of the Board of Selectmen, that Ed's gonna read.
When you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Voted to approve the sale of two million, four hundred and ten thousand dollars at one point two percent general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes, in parentheses, of the town dated June seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, and payable June sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, to, to Century Bank and Trust at par and accured interest, if any, plus a premium of seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Further Further voted, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice and sale and preliminary official statement dated May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and an official statement dated June seventh, two thousand and sixteen, each in such form as may be, be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted, that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking and compliance with S E C Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town. Which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted, that we authorize and direct the treasurer to review and update the town's post issuance federal tax compliance procedures with such changes, if any, as the treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. Further voted, that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer and are hereby authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Okay. I'm gonna hold you there, Ed, because we have to do the hearing at seven.
That was all done.
I know, but I need to do any further on this.
Okay.
We'll come back to it. So we have a hearing at seven o'clock to renew, the renewal of a water, the Water Commissioner's permit for an earth removal activities on the per, property located at Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass. Ed's gonna read the, um, public hearing notice.
Public, uh, legal notice, public hearing, earth removal permit renewal. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven P M. in the main meeting room. Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. On the application of the town of Groveland Water Commissioners for a permit renewal for earth removal activities on property located on Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass, and shown on Assessors Map thirty-three, Parcell six and ten. A copy of the plans are in file in the town clerk's office and are available for viewing Mondays from nine A M. to eight P M. And Tuesdays through Thursdays from nine A M. to four thirty P M., uh, on the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. We're gonna open this into a public hearing and a roll call vote. McDonald? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Watson?
Yes.
Dan, yes? O'Neil?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I'd like to invite the Water Department to speak on behalf of this request on the earth removal and...
Gentlemen, good evening. So this is a renewal of a gravel permit that's existing, um, on, uh, former Angellini property. Um, we're still working on the first grid down there, all the paperwork seems to be in order. Any history you'd like to know, I'd be happy to answer for it.
I'm a little new, so I wouldn't mind the history.
History goes back to when we purchased the property. Um, so the property was, uh, a million four, if I remember correctly. In order to reduce the cost of property, we made a range of Mr. Angellini, that he could remove it, beginning in that business, and reduced the cost to nine hundred thousand dollars for property.
Anyone have anything else they wanna ask for questions?
Well, we have a, uh, plan up here, can you just kinda show us, show us what we're looking at?
We could do that.
You know, and we need people watching, too. Hold it up, just tell us, tell us, um, what was, what is, and what will be.
Well, it strictly deals with the Angellini property, obviously. Um, there's no other, um, dealings with the other three, the other two cases. It's divided in sectors, um, for, for grid, for the purpose of removal. Well, one gets dotted, uh, the, uh, process of, uh, removing stumps and so on. Sell off the, uh, the, uh, sand as it's necessary, you know, it's just what the market pays for, uh, for the area. He has a five-year permit.
You can go down to what, within six feet of the water table?
Has to be always above, there are, um, wells in place now.
Yeah.
Uh, nearly existing wells, the D E P monitor, but also wells that the contractor had to install and being monitored.
Is it the intention to the level that whole, um, lot, uh...
That, that section of it, yes.
So there won't, won't be anything above six feet when it's done, it will be graded to six feet above water table, the entire lot?
That's correct.
And then when that occurs, that's when he stops?
That's correct.
Unless time lapses prior to that, but he's probably gonna complete, that's his plan.
That would be correct.
It's actually gonna be higher.
Yeah, it will be higher than when we're done. So the six feet is critical, we all know what happened to the property in the past.
Yeah.
So it's, it's already monitored by D E P, um, with test wells all over that, uh, property. So we know, according to reports that we have from the engineers, that we're...
So you can't make a mistake and go to five feet, four feet, three feet, there's no way that, there's no way, it's constant monitor.
That's right.
And then they're gonna reseed it?
Yes. Yep.
At the end? The process?
I'm sorry, it's Mr. Angellini that's in the, in behind me from my...
Right now, it's kinda sandy over there, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, he's starting to put down a little now, John Slopes.
For erosion control reasons?
The, um, the, the, the way you're proceeding right now, do you guys think you'll stay right at the, at the five years, you think you'll go shorter or longer?
Our hope is to be less than.
I think Phil, Phil could give you a better answer.
The fault is in that first grid, and I think he's ahead of schedule.
Okay.
So I think he's well within five years.
Yep. And just so the public knows, that land, when you're all done, that's going to be the well, set aside for the well, am I correct?
That's part of it, yes.
So there's gonna be no building on it?
No.
It's, uh, gonna be reseeded, planted, and that's it?
It'll be part of that C R. that we've been discussing?
Right.
For Mattingly's property and Mr. Angellini's property.
Okay.
Uh, most, there might be a walk-in trail on it, passive recreation.
Passive rec, just like we talked about with the, uh, C R.
Locker fields, baseball fields, it's passive.
That's right.
Right, and possibly if they needed to bring a water or soil line through there, they would, gonna have the rights to do that.
We have the rights currently to go through there and for a future, um, water pipe and then two well sites.
Okay.
That's to be determined, it has to shuffle.
Anyone have any other questions?
May I just make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
So this is the same permit that came before you last year, the only change we made last year was, um, when the trucks exited on Center Street, they had to go one specific way.
Right.
And the Highway Department said that that was, um, not in the best interest because it was gonna deteriorate the road. So it works much better when they come out and take a left now, um, but we removed that restriction. Other than that, this is the same permit, all the conditions are the same that were initially applied for. I just wanna correct, it's not really a five-year permit, it still has to be renewed on an annual basis.
No, no, I know, I was just...
Up to five years.
Right.
Part of the language of the sale?
Right, no.
Was five years, but you're right, annually, the Board of Selectmen have to...
Oh, I was just letting the people know, if they, running ahead of schedule, behind schedule, whatever, you know what I mean?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Last year, the, you know, the, that property, it was a part of that property or, or, or only that property for, that was? Was, did football get a permit, or was that the, the other Center Street property?
That was a former busing property. We haven't been, done anything on the Angellini and Mattingly properties.
So the, the, the truck exit and, uh...
It comes through that property.
It was coming through the busing property?
Right.
Where the kids were playing football, but the kids now have moved over to the pines.
They'll still cooperate with that, if they come in and fall, I mean...
We were out of there at three thirty, never called even sorry.
Never, ever, once had a, had a problem.
So that worked out?
Yeah.
I think all Dan's asking is, if, if we did use that property, for some reason, you would be understandable that we'd keep the same agreement. You'd work with us if we had to have some reason, have someone cutting through there or whatever.
Yeah, like if we couldn't get the grass cutter, it was this high down the pines, we had to have the kids move over to, to the other field, there wouldn't be a problem with the trucks or anything. Yeah, but then we'd lose them sometimes, the little kids, you know what I mean, you can't find them. Yeah, with the green uniforms, it's, it's, it's tough.
You all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, I see Mike, I think you wanna say something?
Mike Dempsey, Conservation Commission. Part of the permit is monitoring what the, um, contract says, uh, has to be done. And so that kind of falls within, uh, the Highway Department, Bob Arakalian does his piece. And Conservation also monitors, um, from a wetland point of view, and some of the erosion controls are in place. So I think in your packet is a, is a list of some of the things, there's checklists that have been, that we developed together, Bob and I, that get filled out every quarter. The contractor cannot move to another sector, there's, there's actually five sectors, sex, sectors in that six-acre portion where gravel's being removed, so they can't move from one to the next until we are happy with, uh, what's going on in the one they're working in. So, um, over the past year and a half, with our monitoring, everything has been, uh, found to be satisfactory. So I don't think Conservation has any problem with the, uh, permit being renewed.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for Mike? Does anyone else have anything, wanna speak on the public hearing? Okay.
I did just wanna comment that we did notify all the abutters, so this is a formal public hearing and they were notified.
Alright, so the board should be ready to vote. Can I get a motion to accept and approve this earth removal permit?
Motion to accept and approve the renewal for the earth removal plan at the former Angellini property.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll second that.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I think we need a roll call vote.
Yep, so...
In favor?
McDonald?
In favor.
Watson?
Yes.
Dan, yes, and O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor? So, okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing at, looks like seven eleven, seven twelve. The hearing will be closed. To the time, I think we're all set, right Denise?
Yes. Please need to, um, have a roll call to close the public hearing.
Roll call vote to close. McDonald?
Favor of closing.
Watson?
Yes.
Dan, yes, and O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay, so it's now officially closed and looks like it passes. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. You all can sign the back page. You all can sign the back page.
Yeah, we'll see you tomorrow. Look, look, look me up.
Now. Slitting wood in his yard. Okay Ed, so now we need to move forward with the rest of this. So we were at the point where we read, um.
So you have a motion on the table, um, for the votes of the board, the two million four hundred and ten thousand. Ed made the full motion, it needs to be seconded.
Okay, someone want to second that?
Second.
Seconded. Uh, any further discussion on the borrowing?
No.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, all set? So we're all set with that, am I correct?
Yep.
So now moving on.
Bill just wanted to pass that down.
Yep. So moving down the list. We have a one day liquor license for a Dew hop at Nichols Village with Mill River Wine for Saturday, June twenty fifth. At, from four to eight, rain date, Sunday, June twenty sixth.
Steph, may I just comment on that? So, um, Nichols Village does have their own liquor license, but they have a club license, which means they can only serve to members of their facility. They do have this event open to the public, so therefore they require a one day license to allow the public to come in. Um, on the license itself, um, because they have a rain date, even though I don't see any rain in the forecast for Saturday. Um, I did make the license expire Sunday at eight P M. to cover both days in case they do postpone it. The board normally does not require police details, because again, it's at their private location. They bear the liability. The insurance certificate holds Nichols Village and, uh, Mill River Wines as liable. The town's really not, you just have to grant approval for them to sell alcohol to the public.
Okay. So can I get a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we, uh, we approve that, uh, one day liquor license with a rain date.
Can I get a second? Second? Dan, anyone? Seconded by Dan? Seconded by Dan?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, have they had these events before in the past? Anybody know?
Yes.
They went smoothly, no issues? No riots?
Not, not that I heard of.
No police.
I actually went to it. Is this the one, is this the wine and art one or?
No, this is, um, this is a fifties and sixties, like out in the grass.
Oh, no, sorry, I haven't been to this one.
Go up, you seem like, you know, fifties generation, right?
No, I haven't been to this one, went to the wine and art one. They're gonna have a police detail?
No, that's just saying, we don't normally, because it's their own liability, the town's not liable in any of this. It's their property, it's their facilities. It's their liability should something happen.
That's what I'm saying, if it's, if they controlled in the past, then you know.
Those old folks can get pretty wild.
Alright. Any further discussion? And.
Vote.
All in favor?
Yes.
Alright. All set with that one? Okay, so I know we don't, it was seven thirty, but we can go back to the Conservation Commission request to hire a conservation agent, right?
You can.
Okay, it looks like Mike has something to say.
So we were, uh, all town departments were asked to put together goals and objectives and, uh, for F Y two thousand seventeen. So, um, the Conservation Commission came up with four goals for the year that we believe will enhance our services to the citizens of Groveland. And also help the town achieve its core goals. And, uh, the most significant goal, uh, that we put of these four goals would be to hire a part-time conservation agent. That would assume the response, some of the responsibilities and tasks that are handled by volunteers and also do some things that we don't do now. So, our, our other, so that goal is probably the most significant one. Our other three goals were to improve services to the public by continuing documentation of our procedures. Enhance neighborhoods through improvements to conservation properties. And finally, to increase community development by better publicizing our open space properties and trails in Groveland. So, the other three goals kinda, again, feed into, uh, our idea of hiring an agent. Because again, much of what we do, well, everything that we do is by volunteer. But, um, many times, uh, things don't get done or they don't quite make it to the top of the list with, uh, volunteers, as you know. So, uh, what we're proposing is to hire a, uh, part-time agent. The agent would work somewhere in the twelve to fifteen hour per week range. And our budget for doing this right now is fifteen thousand dollars maximum. And your final question would be, well, where are you gonna get that fifteen thousand dollars from? You don't recall seeing that in the budget. Indeed, you didn't see it in the budget, uh, because, um, Conservation hasn't received any funding in the budget besides stipends for about, uh, fifteen years or longer. And, uh, all of our services are provided through fees. So we're able to, um, collect fees, state mandated, state mandated fees for, uh, D E P filings. And also we have, uh, fees for the local bylaw filing. So between those two, uh, sources, we are able to maintain our level of service, which right now primarily funds, uh, besides office supplies and, uh, any other, um, supplies that we, uh, require. Is our, um, secretary that, uh, does our minutes, answers the phone, puts, uh, packages together for, um, hearings, that type of thing. So, uh, over the last couple of years, we have been able to put aside, actually, it's been over a period of probably three or four years. We've been able to put aside close to thirty thousand dollars. So we have, uh, that set aside. So what we'd like to do is spend, uh, fifteen thousand dollars of that this year in fiscal two thousand, this coming fiscal year, two thousand seventeen, to pay for having an agent. The, the difficulty, the only difficulty that, uh, the commission sees is that, um, because we're relying on fees. Fees are not a constant source of income, somewhat dependent upon how much building is going on in town, what people are doing in town and what particular projects they're doing. So, um, our hope is that we can sustain this. We've got, you know, approximately two years' worth of, um, fees set aside to be able to pay for this, uh, agent. And also, our hope is that by having an agent, we'll be able to increase some of our revenue through, um, certificate of compliance. As many times, they don't get filed because nobody's bugging people to, uh, go out and file them once a project is all done. So, um, if we have an agent, we're hoping that we'll be able to, uh, increase our revenue a bit by doing a better job of, um, encouraging people to do filings when they're supposed to do them. So, I'm asking tonight that you approve the, um, creation of an employee for the town of Groveland whose title would be part-time conservation agent and to be funded entirely by, uh, fees from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Anyone want to have any comment on it? Go ahead Ed.
I'd like to see, before we even look at this, I'd like to see, uh, perhaps at the next meeting, a, a list of the conservation fees, what, what they are and what they're, and what they're for, that, uh, that you charge people. Uh, we have no idea, and I don't know if my fellow board members know, what some of the conservation fees are. And I, I'd, I'd like to see what those are. Take a look at them.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I can tell you pretty much.
No, I, I want to, Mike, I want to see them in writing. I want to be able to look at them, read them. I, I, I don't want them verbally, I want them in front of me so I can look at them and read them. And read them, and then maybe we can discuss them. And, uh, I, I know you got them all off the top of your head, I, I'd like them in writing in front of me, when, when we take a look at them. So there's no question on, on what they are, what the fees are, uh, uh, and how would they vote? Were they, is this a vote of the Conservation Commission that, uh, voted on the fees or were they voted on by the Board of Selecting?
The fees are in the bylaw, which was approved, last approved in two thousand nine by town meeting vote. And then, um, the commission usually reviews the fees every four or five or six years. I think our current fee schedule right now is, um, from two thousand fourteen.
Do you have anything you want to say, Bill? Dan, do you have anything you want to say?
As far as, um.
While he's thinking, I'll, I'll.
I mean, what's it gonna cost for the? Did you get into that? I mean, eighteen hours a week, I mean.
Well, we're.
I mean, how much?
We don't know, you know, it depends.
And, and, and if you have a number, and again, I don't mean to cut you off, but was it budgeted for in the budget we just did?
Yeah, it was, and that was rolled into the planner slash conservation agent.
So how much, how much room do you have for this? You may, you may end up at a different, you know, amount, but what, what do you got in the budget that you could spend?
Like I said, about fifteen thousand, so you know, that, that could be, um, fifteen hours a week at, uh, twenty dollars per hour roughly.
So about twenty bucks an hour. And there's no boundaries, cause it's on the nineteen.
Right.
Cut it off.
Mike, my question is, is, um, you stated that the person's gonna make fifteen hours of fifteen K a year and you have two years' worth of money set aside. What concerns me, if we hire a person and we know we have two years' salary set aside, and I heard what you said, you said that the, the, the fee schedules would put the money aside for the future years. I would be worried that we'd have that money in the third year for that person. Are you pretty confident you're gonna have that money set aside, another fifteen K for the third and, and on and on and on? Or I wouldn't want to hire someone on a, on a guess or, or, um, you know, a whim. I'd rather have this.
Sure.
Pretty locked in stone, I mean.
No, we don't want.
Pretty embarrassing to hire someone and then turn around the second year and say, well, we don't have the money.
No, we don't want to either.
Yeah.
And so that's why we've waited till now, till we have two years.
Worth of money.
Roughly two years' worth of money, and that will still give us another couple of years. You know, our fees generally have been bringing in, you know, any, anywhere from nine thousand to fourteen thousand a year. Depending again on, it's hard to really say, you know.
Right. Do you see any other kind of expense, expenses that would come up during those years that you may have to have a big lump taken away from there? I mean, do you have any kind of a, I don't know, I, I mean, any kind of expenses that lawyer or attorney fees? I don't know, I don't know what, nothing.
Usually, the only other place we spend money is either on supplies, which we can limit. Or, um, our, uh, secretary that does the minutes, but that's not too much.
Okay, so basically, you got the first year set aside, you got the second year, and what you're saying is you'll start putting money away for the third year automatically.
Right.
And that's how you plan on doing it?
Right.
Okay. Anyone else have anything you want to say?
It says, it says, um, supervision is, uh, gonna be under the Conservation Commission chair, but the Portis Lockman would still retain jurisdiction over, you know.
You're still appointing authority, yes.
Pointing, hiring, firing, that sort of thing, so it won't be a, a contract position, it'll be at will, I mean, how's that gonna play out?
Yep.
Be at will, part-time possession.
Correct. Under the personnel policy.
Who would, who would, um, who would write the, um, the guidelines? Would the conservation, write their job description and all that?
There's a copy of it in here, I would just take this and tweak it to fit the format that I use for all job descriptions and put the legal requirements in there. But if you're good with this, this is the one we would perceive of.
Alright, go ahead Ed.
Mike, you, you stated fifteen hours a week.
Yes.
And this paperwork that we got here, uh, flexible work schedule, approximately eighteen hours a week, listed on the back page.
That was, that was from the, that says down the bottom, December two thousand fifteen, I think.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, that was what was submitted with our budget for that, um, planner slash conservation agent. So that's the, that's, the job description's the same, but what we, our goal is to hire somebody and not spend any more than fifteen thousand. So if we can get somebody for eighteen hours at that lower hourly rate, but I suspect it might be more like fifteen hours.
Okay. Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I, I still, before I vote on this, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the list of the fees from the Conservation Commission.
Oh, I agree, I would like to definitely hear more and see more of the, how, you know, the proof that we got the money there, we can pay for it and what have you. So I agree with, with Ed, I, I would like to make sure we have everything set forth and what have you, and the fee schedule, and make sure we can, it's there and what have you.
Just, just a follow-up question, is, is that, and maybe directed at, uh, to the chair, to the, uh, finance director, is that in a revolving account of some sort?
It's in a special revenue fees account. Conservation and planning board are authorized to collect, and zoning board, they collect fees in special revenue accounts.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? Good, Dan? Hello?
Well, I mean, you know, how, how will that affect, uh, what the Conservation Commission does now? It's pretty much, it's trying to take a lot of things off their plate and make the meetings, you know, shorter and just kinda.
No.
Will it, will it, will it shorten the interval between meetings and, you know, closure time and better customer service? You know, I mean, what's in it for the public, I guess?
Well.
What, what do people get?
It's gonna, it's gonna do two things, I believe. Right now, what we do is dependent upon volunteers, you know. So I do, personally, I do a lot of work, because I'm retired, so I've got the time to do it. But, you know, I don't know that I'm gonna plan on doing it for the next two, three, five more years. So this will give us somebody who can be trained to do these kind of things, the way our procedures work in Groveland. And the second of all, it's going to allow us to have set hours here at Town Hall and provide better service to the public. A lot of times, now, our only open meeting time is Monday nights at seven to eight P M. So we would be able to expand our hours and also be able to do a better job at doing inspections. There's a lot of field work that's involved. And, again, it's when I'm available, when another commissioner is available, they're not usually available during the day, so it's difficult. This person would be available during the day to work with residents and builders and anyone else who's doing anything. So I think it'll be better service.
Get someone for twenty an hour.
Well.
They have to be a licensed site professional, they're not gonna be twenty dollars an hour. I mean, it seems like the caliber of person with the, you know, depth of knowledge you need, um, to go do inspections. And it's, it's on a pile with a building inspector.
Yep.
Right?
Well, yes, um, there are part-time people doing this. Most towns our size have a part-time person, they don't have a full-time person.
And you shop this out and it's, it's doable at that price range?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Bill.
Mike, do you have that, that much business, I guess I'd call it, that you need to add parties to, to, because business is so good?
Yeah, especially now. You know, it, typically, there may be calls to go out on five or six visits a week. Each one taking, you know, an hour, an hour and a half. That doesn't count any paperwork that comes out of that, you know, uh, site report, reporting back to the commission, you know, weighing in on any permit that might be issued. So, I'd say twelve to fifteen hours a week is probably the minimum that we could use.
So you have a significant backlog of, of business now, or?
It's not really a backlog, but you know, some, some things don't get done on the timeframe that we'd like, let's put it that way.
Now, is, is this more seasonal?
Yeah, to a certain extent.
Than, than year round? So it typically picks up in the spring?
Yes.
And then tapers off in the fall? And then almost non-existent in the winter?
No, not non-existent, you know, there, there's definitely less things going on, because a lot of times, uh, a developer may be wanting to start a project right away in the spring, you know, come April fifteenth, when our seasonal restriction ends, they may want to start right away. So they may file with us in November, because it sometimes can take three or four months to get through the permit process. So in the wintertime, you know, we may have larger projects that we're dealing with, not a lot of smaller projects.
Yeah, it, it is my only concern, and I know Dan can probably speak to it and Bill can probably speak to it. There's seasonalities to some businesses, and, and at that point, you want to make sure that you have enough work to keep that person busy for the full year, or sometimes Dan might hire a temp to come in, do taxis, and then Bill might hire a couple of, you know, college kids to help him during the early part of the spring to get that initial grass cutting and, and hedge trimming and, you know, get it under control. So my point is, I know you guys are busy now, it's great weather, things are flying fast and furious, but as we go along through the year, do you believe you're gonna be able to keep that busy, that person busy enough throughout the course of the entire year?
Yeah. Well, there's other things that go on, you know, that it's a matter of managing your time. So for instance, many times, there's a grant you might want to write, and you, you have to do it, obviously, when it comes out, it's due. But sometimes you can prepare for things like that, the annual grant, so you might be able to write an annual grant, you're gonna get all ready for it in the wintertime, even though it may be due in the spring or in the fall, either one. So those are the, and actually, those are the kind of things that we don't completely take advantage of many times, because it just takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of preparation work. So I would imagine this person be able to fill in plenty of their time doing those kind of jobs.
Alright, all set? Dan, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
So, you want me to bring the fee schedule back on the next meeting?
I would like to see some, some, some numbers myself and, you know, just so we can actually physically see how this is transparent and how it's gone for the last year and two years and all that, but that's, that's just me, I don't know anyone else, but they want to see.
I, I, I agree, I, I'd like a follow-up, um, question though.
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, that's okay, no, I just, uh, what, what do you think if we, uh, take this paperwork and, and send it over to the building inspector? Have him look at it and see if there's any duplication of responsibilities? It may not be, but there might be.
Sure, I mean, that's, that's up to you guys, I mean, it's good with me. Are you, are you up for that, Bill, to see if there's any duplication?
Doesn't matter to me.
Dan?
I, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, if, if that's what Ed wants to be satisfied with, uh, due diligence, uh, before voting on it, I'll, I'll go along with that.
Okay, alright.
It's reasonable.
So we'll, we'll have him look at it in the interim and then we'll meet back with you again on this.
Let's, let's do it in two weeks.
Think you could, um, to save some time in, in, in the, you know, so we don't have to waste a lot of time next week? Can you email us those, that list, so we can kind of review it way ahead of time and then be ready with our questions, as opposed to just getting it that night?
It's a one-page document, it's on our, you know, the town website, so.
Perfect. Don't even bother.
Is there any way for me, Mike, that you can get to Denise, like, the buildup of the money? Is there any way to, to show that? Is it hard to do, I mean, how you've set the money aside or whatever?
Well, what that would require is to go back through, you know, a year or two or three to look at all, for each filing, what was it?
No, no, I don't want every little thing.
No.
If, in, um, say, in fifteen, that number was this, and then you showed me in sixteen, you know, you're getting at the numbers.
Are you just looking for?
The increase in.
Are you just looking for the revenue and then the expenditures on a yearly basis for the last two years?
Right, I wanted to see that, I want to see the track record of it moving forward, that's all I'm looking for.
Oh, okay, you started saying, over the last few years, just what's the revenue been per year?
No, no, I don't care about the revenue, I care about the track record showing the money's been set aside, set aside, that's all I, I just want to make sure, I want to feel comfortable that that money's been set aside and going forward, I can feel good that I'm gonna hire a person possibly, and that money would be there for the third year. I just want a track record of showing how.
If I, I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I believe that money was transferred at town meeting, at special town meeting, to put it into the account to prepare it to spend. Right, didn't we transfer the fifteen thou, but we transferred more this year to cover this.
Yes, right.
So town meeting's already authorized a transfer, it's already been set aside, and they've now moved it in anticipation.
So we'd have to do that in the third year, we'd have to transfer it again.
We would have to each year transfer the money.
For that person.
But it has been transferred for fiscal seventeen, in case you did in fact approve this.
Okay. Alright, well, I think that's good, we'll, we'll wait and get that information and email Denise and so get it out to the members. Thank you for coming in.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Make a point of, uh.
Yep.
Point of, uh, order, I guess. I'm reading all of the, um, documents for signature. And, um, I don't, I don't think I could sign this. The, um, approval of sale, departure of Century Bank and Trust Company? And in the last paragraph before signature, it says no, you know, um, basically no financial interest. No other official of the town has any direct or indirect financial interest in or relationship with the purchaser. Business with Century Bank, I mean, can you?
Well, I don't think, it's not gonna impact your mortgage one way or another if they give us, if they buy our municipal bonds. So you're not gonna benefit from this on a personal level. If you feel, you don't need to sign, as long as they have a majority, you don't need to sign that one, but it wouldn't have any.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, it doesn't have any personal effect on you.
Well, what it says here, I mean, you know, somebody could say, oh, well, did they get the? Well, what it says here, I mean, you know, somebody could say, oh, well, did they get the note, 'cause I'm on the Board of Selectmen, and then that I get, you know, equity line on my house, I can't have that.
That's fine.
So, can I withdraw my vote on that? We voted for the, and then the signature's here, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you.
I'm reading it now, and it, it says no direct or indirect or, or relationship with the purchaser, the purchaser's the bank. I mean, I, my business checking accounts with those guys. Not to tell everyone my business, but I mean, I'm sitting here looking at.
So, can we change the, can we change the vote?
I'd like to do a reconsideration, withdraw, and I'd, I'd like to abstain from that vote, and not sign this document, if you don't need.
So, what we'll do is.
As long as I have the three, I don't need your signature.
You're good to vote?
I'm good.
Okay, so can we, do we need to revote it again, or?
You should, just take it on the roll call.
I gotta run the side of caution bill.
Okay, that's fine, I agree.
I think the proper thing probably to do would be to, um, would be to vote to reconsider.
We need to get a motion on the floor to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the, the vote of the Century Bank.
I, as a, I, as a chairman, I, I as a chair will make a motion to reconsider in, on the borrowing of the, how much was it?
Two million.
Two million.
For the fire truck and the.
Just on, 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 on the language contained in the note, I mean, I gotta run the side of caution, disclosure to the people of the town.
We're borrowing it on, what was it?
Votes of the board's the second item.
Votes of the board. That's right, right here, anyway.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and then we're gonna vote, Dan will sustain.
Sustain.
Okay.
Can you just vote on the reconsideration motion first?
We'll, we'll vote on the reconsideration first. So, Watson?
Yes, I'm for the reconsideration.
Oh, no, okay. Hi.
And now you can revote on that.
Now, we'll revote on the borrowing, I just, let me find it again, I think I filed.
It's the bottom of the first page, Bill.
Bottom. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make, I'll do the motion.
I just wanna read it, with the dollar amounts?
Uh, uh, vote and, and sign, two million, four hundred and ten thousand dollars bond anticipation note for the water, main project, fire truck, and police dispatch center, I'll make that motion, that we approve that.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, and all in favor?
Yes.
Abstained.
Okay, sustain, right, okay, we got that. All right.
No problem. Thanks for pointing that out.
I'll sleep better.
All right, so now, we're jumping around here, but now, I see Chief Lay's here, and we're a little bit early, I'm sure he won't yell for five minutes early. So, Chief Lay is to provide his monthly update on the fire department. I told you you could go home. Good evening. How are you?
Good. Good morning, Bella.
Yes. Fifteen, twenty minutes is, is what I have, anything you want me to address that maybe is not on, to give you a little bit of an agenda, Bill?
How much is the fire truck?
How much is it?
Yeah, did you guys get?
Right now, as, as it stands, uh, seven fifty.
No pennies, no dollars, and it's seven hundred and fifty.
Seven fifty.
Right on the money.
Yeah.
Did I yet?
I had to give up a couple of things in the, in the final moments, but nothing, nothing earth-shattering, not, nothing we couldn't add later if we wanted to.
When's it being delivered?
End of September is, is what we've negotiated.
How come so long?
They're using it, and that was part of the agreement, is they're, they're showing it to other potential clients. And in exchange for that, we've saved probably eighty thousand dollars. They'll probably put ten thousand miles on the truck, in the grand scheme of things, totally immaterial. And then it goes back to the factory, and they go through the entire truck, and it comes back certified, brand-new. So, it's a brand-new truck, from that perspective, with ten thousand miles on it.
So, you've got a final purchase and sale agreement for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, um, and in my, in the agenda, it says, we're working on finalizing the specs and finalizing the agreement. It's just a lot of, what happened is, we had an original set of specifications that we worked on, and then we didn't have an agreement in the fall, because we couldn't sign, kinda had a, the intent, if you will. So, they continued to build the truck, and at times, you know, added and deleted against the specs that existed, because I didn't own them. So, now, they're trying to catch the specifications up with what they actually built. It's minor, but by, by law, it needs to be documented, right down to, you know, the, the most minor of details.
So, what's the timeline on that?
I thought I have it last week, and I, I haven't seen it, probably this week. It's, it's a lot of material to pour over, there's one, one guy doing it, apparently. I've been in touch with him.
Okay.
It's a long process, so I've come to learn.
Longer than I thought.
Well, you know, I, I felt bad for the, for the salesman, that I keep calling him, he says, how many trucks do you think I sell a year? I'm like, okay, I get it, a couple? He goes, yeah. So, it's a very long process, they show a lot, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it, for not great margins, probably not the business you wanna be in, but. But it's good, we're, we're optimistic, we, we have to pick color scheme, so it's not really painted, we heard it was, we heard it wasn't, so we've got some options. I think the leading thought right now is to have it be consistent with the scheme we already have in the fleet. White on the top, red on the bottom. We could've gone all red, we could've gone black and red, there's a lot of, a lot of theories.
Change the price?
No, it doesn't, they're bringing it back and painting it, so. Yeah, if they had to settle for something, then we negotiate something lower. Not the case. I'll take you quickly to incidents, not a lot to report there, we're fairly flat, again, we're down a little bit this month as compared to May of last year, nothing really notable, go ahead.
So, that's, that's a misprint, where it says year-over-year up ten percent, it should be year-over-year down ten?
That's a good catch.
Correct?
Down.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, no, 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 it's, we are up ten percent year-over-year. So, month to month, we're down a little, year-over-year, we're up. We're trending ten percent ahead of last year in total incidents. Okay?
What's the majority of them?
Medical, still.
Percent, seventy-five, eighty?
It, it ranges eighty.
Eighty percent.
Eighty to eighty-five. That's consistent, you know, fire service-wide, quite honestly, not just here. Budget. I, I was concerned with the budget, that I would run over considerably in wages. I've talked with Denise and Jackie about how to manage that. The guidance I have is, if I have the offsetting expense money against what I project I'll be over in wage, it'd be acceptable. I will tell you that we're trending pretty good right this minute, and I got a couple of thousand dollars left with a couple of weeks to go. But who, who's to say? But I have much more than that sitting in my expense line, that I'll wait till the end if I need to spend some of it, and I'll talk. So, that's it, I'm, I'm okay on that, I can manage that, I'll manage, it's nothing crazy. We're talking a couple of thousand dollars, and it's really in the wage.
Which the top, a couple thousand, you can move within, within the budget.
I can't move it, but later, I could pay, you can explain, I could take it out of reserve in my extra.
So, he's gonna have to go for a reserve fund transfer between finance and the Board of Selectmen, but what I advised him and anyone else who needs a re-reserve fund transfer, because we can't move from expense to salary, if he has the money left in expense, it's sort of a sign of good faith that he left it in his budget, so it will still be left to go to free cash, whereas if we're taking the reserve fund money, so it's kind of a wash. We just can't take it from his expense and put it right into his salary line.
My question is, help me out, I know it's only two thousand dollars, just because the way the year ran, more or less, you, you can't sit there with a glass jar and say, I'm gonna be this perfect at the end of the year, that's all it basically is, am I correct when I say that? There's a lot of variables, and I don't really control how often we get called and where we go. So, you don't have a glass jar, you can look, look in and lock in the end number at the end of the year? I, I wish I was that. Okay, so you, that, okay, so you answered my question. I'd be doing other things. Yeah. All right. Yeah, no, absolutely. Absolutely. EMS update. Didn't bring the EMS team along tonight, they, they had some other things to do, but I'll give you an update on that. We talked, I think, a lot about that last time I was here, but I'll tell you where we're at. We're working through the entire ambulance service application process. Now, everything under that, in, indented, is part of that process. So, we have a new hospital affiliation agreement, which is something that is key. I've been in communication with Denise today around insurance limits, and apparently Denise, they have a million, three million options, so we can just modify the agreement, that satisfies that. We've created an entire new set of standard operating guidelines that support the EMS mission, that's required by DPH in order to go in this direction, you just gotta have it all buttoned down. So, we have that. We have a new quality assessment and improvement program, so everything you do in EMS, you gotta review it through a formal process, and you have to have corresponding improvements against any shortfalls that you find through good quality improvement work. So, we, we have that document, some of this will need to do a little training around, but, but that's in place. We have a new agreement, can I get you something? We have a new agreement for medic, medication exchange, and basically what that means is, I don't have to go online and order my meds anymore, I can go to the hospital and get them, pay, get them immediately, so I don't have to wait to get stuff shipped to me, and I pay a little better rate. They don't give them to me, but it's a little better rate, it's, it's a pretty quick turnaround. That's a good service from the hospitals, so we're happy to have that. I do have a little bit of an additional equipment investment in order to qualify the trucks as ambulances. There's certain equipment you have to have. Last week, I was buying binoculars and, and road triangles and, you know, stuff that you don't, GPS, you're required to have it in ambulance, so I gotta put them on our trucks. I made an initial purchase of that, if I get to the end of the budget and I have a few thousand dollars that I can spend, I need to get at some of that stuff quickly. So, we don't wanna have the town people think that we're gonna cop people around in these fire trucks. Or we, we won't, we'll never let them think that. Okay, so, when we make the statement that we're gonna, we're gonna equip them as ambulances, that's just to put the equipment in there, 'cause they go into the call, they, they need the equipment for the call? We will be, that was the email that I sent to Boston Global article, really hit home on that. We will be an ambulance service, we just won't transport. Yep. So, that should make us all feel a little better around, I waited a long time for the ambulance, we didn't wait for patient care, we waited for a ride to the hospital, and there's a difference, okay? You know, the, the quicker people get pre-hospital care, the better the outcome for them in the long run. So, it's about getting there quickly, administering the right kind of treatment, and then waiting for transport. We've talked to Trinity about a few of the shortfalls, we talked about last time, Ed. And we're working on that, we're, we're gonna work on their mutual aid agreements and make sure that they're here inside of the agreement around the emergency, the EMS zone plan, so.
Now, at, at one time, wasn't there some kind of discussion or proposal that Trinity, discussion with the owner and, and maybe former fire chief, that Trinity would station an ambulance here in Groveland?
No.
Never?
Well, has, that's been proposed a number of times, the, the entry level fee to that is about a half a million dollars. But, it just doesn't make any. The, but I, I was told, and it's only hearsay, but I was told that I'm only talking about to try and have them, not that, like, I understand what you're saying, you gotta get the, you gotta get the officers there, the firemen there to secure the scene, get the person secure, et cetera, et cetera. But I was told that if we were to rewrite their contract with them, we could write something in the contract saying, we want you to be certain times over here. They may, they may buck back at us and say, nope, we don't wanna do it, but it is writable into the contract to rewrite with them. Am I correct? Okay. So, we could possibly have that clause, but, again, you know, everyone, as you stated, everyone's sitting there at the scene, and it seems like ever for the ambulance to get there, that's just a, one of these things that happens, I agree, but, um. When it happens, I will tell you it's an outlier. Okay, so, let's say you signed up with Trinity to have, what, a truck here all the time, or just a little more assurance, and you'd be willing to pay for a little more assurance? Well, all of a sudden, they're busy and that truck leaves town, there goes your assurance. I mean, you either own it, or you don't. Payroll loans a couple, they're in service to the city, and they don't leave. Okay, and that's an agreement they have with Trinity, but they pay for that. But they also have a lot of other transport that they get to throw into the mix. We don't have any nursing homes, we don't have any, any of that gravy work, driving people around between doctor's appointments and, and here and there, that's the, where the good money is, we don't have that. It's just transports, and it's very difficult to, to plan and staff for emergency transport, it just is. Weather is a huge driver of, of EMS, all of a sudden, you get a hot spell, or you get a storm, everybody's busy, then what do you do? It just happens. So, what you really want is to be able to put care in front of the patient as quickly as you can, that's, that's where it's at. But we'll talk more about this, we're looking to implement this eight-one, we're, we're on track, it's an awful lot for us to get done, but it's the next, next logical step for us. Okay? As a, something that goes with that very nicely, we just changed our EMS vendor, we've been using the same person for years, former firefighter from here, works for Trinity, he's paramedic, very good, he's just stretched. So, he suggested to us that we find someone else, we did, we found another vendor, he gave us an annual plan, we know what we're looking at, we can plan for it, budget for it. Vendor is supplies? Vendor, he is a, a provider of trai, emergency medical training. Okay. He's a mass medical training company. Okay. Located out in Methuen. But he comes in and actually does train with you guys? Yeah, another Trinity paramedic, I mean, that's basically the best place to get it from, so, we're excited about that. We've, you know, over the last year, struggled a little bit with, oh, we have medical training this night, well, we haven't heard from the vendor, we don't know if he's coming, and at last minute, sometimes you call and say, can't make it. It's bad, you get thirty-five people sitting in the room waiting to get trained, and it doesn't happen, it's not good. So, we fixed that problem. Reappointments. We won't talk about people tonight necessarily, but I gave you a PowerPoint presentation, all the slides are on one page. That's directionally where I'm headed. I think it's important for you to understand that I've been on the job for three years, and it's time to, made no personnel changes over that period of time, other than a couple of hires. It's time to reorganize a little bit, we need to get a little, little smarter about what we're doing. I've been working on this with the officers for months to, to get in the right place. So, Dan, you had asked me a while ago where I was around headcount, and I said, you gotta staff up before you staff down, we're kinda there. We've identified people that aren't consistent with what we're trying to get done, okay? This is about being current in your training, it's about being committed, it's about being motivated, it's about, you know, working in the team, it's all that stuff. Some of these people haven't been active in a while, we've tried to reach out to them, we've not heard from them, they're just, it happens. You know, it's, it's the natural attrition in this business. Isn't like you, you're paid for a job, I mean, you're a qualified firefighter, you can opt in and opt out, a lot just opt out. So, we get to July every year, and we say, who's really, you know, indicated that they're not interested? And by, by all accounts, all these people on the list going out have shown significant indication that they don't wanna do this anymore. I've had some one-on-one interviews with people, I brought them in, said, you know, what's going on? This, that, and the other thing, it just doesn't, doesn't add up. So, some turnover is good, we're at that. My, my input to that would be fairness. Absolutely. If you were to bring them in, maybe ahead of time, and sit down with them, and have the gentleman conversation with all of them, and that's all I ask. Yeah, no, we've, we've, we've done a lot of. No surprises, and as you said, I heard you say a minute ago, it wasn't me, it was my officers and whatever, it wasn't just you that made the decision. I have not done this in a vacuum. No, no, I'm, I'm just saying. I'd be foolish to do that. Fairness is the best policy, and sit them down and say, hey, guy, whatever, John Powell, Harry, whatever, this is my thinking, this is my train of thought, sorry, whatever. Just like, uh, me telling one of my landscapers, see you later, it didn't work out, you know, I'm not saying that's what happened here, but, you know what I'm saying? It, it's not any different, it really isn't any different, and if you had, you know, it's not the people, so it isn't that. But if you had certain, you know, types of individuals working for you that weren't motivated and didn't wanna do the. But if you had certain, you know, types of individuals working for you that weren't motivated and didn't wanna do the job and only wanna come in some days and you depended upon them, you'd say, it just doesn't support what we're trying to get done.
Get someone that will do it. Okay?
We talked about the ladder truck. System conversion, I don't know if I talked to you about this or not before, but we, the payroll, not the payroll system, the fire reporting system that we use, we entered into that agreement a couple of years ago. They've gone through an upgrade. The new release is out, myself and Captain York went for training on it. We're ready to go. We've successfully passed through all the data conversion, but they don't have a payroll system in it. And I was promised, what Denise, a year and a half ago, two years ago, they'd had payroll? Well, it's not happening. So, I talked to the vice president of development, they're doing some customization for me. He said, most departments are going in the other direction. And I said, I'm not buying it. Okay, we need to be able to force hours. What if they have an eight-hour call and you work six of them and you work four and I work two? And it's, you can't pay everybody for eight, so you didn't work a shift. So, we're getting some customization. Couple of weeks, they'll have that done. We'll convert, it'll be good. And we'll, for us, it's better reporting for us, and it's probably better reporting when I come in here. I can give you a different series of reports and we can slice and dice whatever we're doing in a number of ways. That's the intent. I know you've heard the paper thing a number of times. We're not paper anymore, we've not been paper for a while. But if you ask me for a five-year history, yeah, I can give you like a year and a half of it, 'cause that's what I have. The rest is paper somewhere in a box. Sheriff's Department Community Service Team, I have them in this week. Today at Central, tomorrow at Central, painting, cleaning, fixing. Going to South Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we're gonna paint the exterior of that building. It looks horrible up there. Denise helped me out with all the expense money to get that done. We just gotta get some, a fresh coat of paint on those. Eddie, I don't know how you stand looking at the front door of that building. It's horrible. It, it, it's horrible. It's, it's in disrepair.
Well, it, it, I did go over and look at it last week. I was gonna do, I was gonna take care of it and I, actually, I tried to scrub it and it's, uh...
Tomorrow, we'll paint the metal door.
That's the one I'm talking about, the metal door.
And then I've talked to some of the officers. We, we'll get up there and rip that trim off and buy some new plastic trim and get it nailed on and...
Well, that, um...
It, it's, it's bad.
It, it, it is, and actually, I, I did try to scrub it and it, uh...
Well, if you're around tomorrow, oh, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, we put you in...
No, I think you can, I think you can, you can scrub it and you can, you can do it, try.
I'm gonna direct the scrubbing.
What's that?
I'll direct the scrubbing. They're gonna sand it and paint it, it'll all be good. Gonna get a whole lot of paint put in there. So, it's, it's good. I did forward to Denise, we could, to a ghost, some new job descriptions, or actually, job descriptions, because I don't think we had any other than mine. So, we now have a set of job descriptions for firefighter, lieutenant, captain, deputy, and so forth. We just didn't have those. I thought it was important to put them in place. So, that's it.
I have a question for you.
Twenty minutes, go ahead, Bill.
Garage doors, will the new ladder truck go through the doors?
Yes, we're all set on that.
Or we don't need to spend the money?
I'm just, you know, before I did anything and gave up the garage door money, I wanted to have the agreement on the truck. That truck fits in these openings.
Okay.
Soon as that happens, we already have the quote on the doors, not the masonry work. So, as quickly as that happens, I'll call the vendor that, that we've selected and have them come up and change the doors.
So, you don't need to know the masonry, you are gonna replace the doors?
Doors are desperately need to be done.
That was my question.
We're on track.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I like these, these are cool.
Okay.
Now, can we get, for next meeting, you had a date, you know, two thousand fifteen, you had a date, two thousand sixteen?
Oh, sure. I can do that, yeah. Absolutely. I thought you were going to ask me to print them in color.
No, no, if you wanna send me that, you wanna email it to me, I'll print them my own in color. That'd be cool.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Another chart guy, another graph guy, right?
Well, just comparative, you can see the trend line up and down. You can't see a trend all one year.
Yeah. It's, I'd given you that before, I just didn't, I didn't do it this time. I thought I could get away with saying, it's still ten percent year over year. And, and it is, I mean, it just, but I, I will, I'll print them, mail them to you. Are you happy to do that?
I believe, thanks, appreciate it.
Font's too small.
What font?
I can't read it.
I can't, listen, I save five, five, thirty, thirty pieces of paper doing it that way.
These are only like a two or something, you know, I gotta...
You gotta go to a three.
Get some real glasses.
Just one more quick comment.
Great.
I don't even...
Bill.
That eighty, eighty-five percent of your calls are medical, but it shows here in May, slightly over sixty-three percent were rescue and EMS.
You have a little reporting issue there? Let me just open it. Categorically, and, and it's one of the things that we're addressing through our new guidelines, is there's some stuff that is probably sitting in, could be in the, in the six hundred category, that should be in the three hundred category. We, we need to get better at that. If, if you drill this down to the next layer, we've got like forty different types of emergency medical calls. We don't need to do that. We need to make them all either three hundred or three-ten, and it kinda standardizes the view you have here. It really is, is two things for us, fire and EMS. And, you know, a little bit of hazmat. That's kinda where we're at.
So, I'm not gonna, I'm not, not, nothing.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna bust them a little bit.
Me?
Yeah, no, so, I'm looking at the chart, number twenty-nine says that we have rescue and EMS. So, we have more rescue in EMS than we do even fires. So, maybe we should've bought an ambulance. I'm just, I'm just giving you a hard time rather than...
Tony's about to, he's about to need an ambulance himself.
I, I told you, when, when we buy an ambulance, it'll be your idea.
Yeah, all right, there we go. I probably won't be around. Anyway, all right.
I, I told you before, you know, you have to do all the aspects and think about transporting.
Yep.
The future of transporting for a town like this is probably pretty good. I told you last time I was here that I'm talking with some other chiefs about regionalization. So that we don't all try to exist alone. And if we had a little regional, you know, regional agreement, we could share a little bit more between the obvious local players. They're in the same spot we're at. Okay? So, I'm working on that. And there's some, there's some work that was done by Metropolitan District Planning Commission a couple of years ago relative to that. And it, it makes a lot of sense. So, we'll talk about that more, but I gotta get through this first. I just gotta get us to be an ambulance service and improve the level of care that we currently provide.
All right, anyone else have anything for the chief? Bill, you good?
If, if any of you are interested in seeing the new truck, it'll be here either Tuesday, the twenty-first, or Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. I haven't nailed down the date.
Drop us an email.
It's gonna be in Connecticut for a show, so it's either coming here before or after the show. And it'll be here all day for us to run it through the paces and then that night.
Just, when you get closer to the date and firm, can you just drop an email?
As soon as I have the, the contract, I'll have that date that's gonna be part of it.
And we can come see it.
Yeah.
I'm driving it.
Can I bring my kids? It's a business.
Can you, can you bring your kids? I wouldn't tell you that you can't. Can I put them up in the truck? No.
All right. It's business.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
They can look at it from...
No, it's, uh, you know, anything big and new.
I didn't know, I mean, you do have like an open house day type of thing.
We're gonna have that in September. We'll have a big...
I didn't know if it was long or...
No, 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 we're gonna have a town event when the truck gets here.
Just clarifying that, I'm not being, being a wise guy.
No, I, I think we all deserve to stand around that truck and eat a hamburger at this point, right?
Right.
Or a hot dog, whichever you prefer, but it'll be good. Dan and I will be growing for people.
You have a little collection bucket next to the grill?
Oh, good, what's that?
Little connection, collection bucket next to the, next to the grill?
Be the grill master.
GoFundMe.com, remember that.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. So, it's not eight fifteen yet, but, um...
Thanks, I think I messed up your docs here.
Uh-oh.
I signed the other docs and then I read that on the last one, I'm like, wait a second here. I crossed out the six, so you wanna reprint the signature page?
Killing me smalls.
I don't know, I'm gonna print, they came from Bonn, Wisconsin.
Oh, man. They're not gonna like white outs.
That's all right, I'll talk to them about it.
I crossed it out, just tell them I read, I mean, it wasn't on every document, that last verbiage on no interest, so...
I'll talk to them about it.
I didn't, you know, it's kind of...
I haven't signed them yet, but I will. We have the, it's at eight fifteen, a little bit early for the, the rec committee. Is enough people here yet? You guys wanna wait for some more people to come in? You're good? Okay? I'm gonna need to sign these, I can do them now, or wait, I'll do them now, okay? I'm gonna put it back to you, you can go through it and then I'll go through it after. Okay? So, um, we have the rec committee here. Number one, I would like to ask the chair if the chair's here or a representative to give us an update of what they're doing, what they're thinking, where they wanna go, what's, what's on your minds, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll start there. And I'm gonna get a piece of paper so I can jot notes if you don't mind.
Not at all.
'Cause I have no memory.
Et cetera, et cetera, or no?
No, I won't jot that down. Go ahead.
All right, so Mike Houghton, Valley Farm Road, Recreation Committee. So, what I want to do is just give an update on where, where we're at with the, the work that was approved at town meeting. So, of the two forty we had approved, we, we know the, the biggest, or we expect to be the biggest unknown would be the well, right? How deep do they have to go? What's gonna be the total cost of the well? So, with the help of Denise, we put out a bid in February, got the bids back coming in about six thousand dollars higher than the higher end of what we thought they were gonna be, based upon what we'd gotten from bid sources prior to getting the numbers together. So, and when they came in, they were kinda loose, I guess is how you'd wanna put it. There wasn't a lot of specifications as to the type of pump, exactly the depth, you know, they'd, they'd go up to, would the electrical get finished, all that kinda stuff. So, we pulled those bids, we put back out again, and Wednesday is the, the due date? So, Wednesday, they're all due and, and then we'll know where we stand on that piece. So, knowing that piece kinda is the linchpin for the remainder of the project. You know, where do we go from there, right? So, depending on what we see for that, then we'll get the well done. And then the next step would be, you know, preparation for the fields, for the, the topsoil, as well as for the irrigation. And then once that's done, then we'd move on to, you know, the fencing, et cetera.
So, the, so two forty, the two forty K is what the total number you had to work with?
Correct.
So, the well number's roughly what?
The well number...
Roughly, not holding you to...
Sure, yeah.
You don't know till the bid comes in, but...
Exactly right. What we had, what we expected was the high end of thirty-six thousand, thirty-six thousand five. And the first ones came in about forty-four, three.
Yeah, I don't know what the, top of your head, not holding you, whether the Bagnell come in at?
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six. So, let's just say it comes in at forty-six.
Yep.
So, forty-six, so that's still leaving you with, I don't have a calculator, two forty from forty-six leaves us...
One ninety-four.
One ninety-four K. At one ninety-four K, you have any idea what, probably if you get the well, you're gonna wanna put your sprinklers in and you're gonna wanna at least do preparation.
So, the recommendation at this point would be that the next step we take would be to have an as-is survey done? Because the fields where they are, the, the rough-in for the fields, you know, are they the right specifications now? You know, I don't exactly know, right? So, to know exactly what we're gonna need for topsoil, because, you know, if you look at the grading, it's, it's kinda variation on the subsoil. So, where do we stand on that? So, to know exactly what we need to do to go out to bid for the topsoil, I think it would make sense to have an as-is done by Civil. And they came in and could do a, a set for us on that. And then we'll know exactly what the specifications are for the requirements of the topsoil from there for both, both fields, as well as for the irrigation at that point.
So, you're saying you're gonna get a civil engineer company to come out?
Well, the guys that did the original design drawing.
Okay. Will they charge you for that?
Have them come back and do an as-is, they would.
Do you know roughly, are they gonna borrow a bunch of your money to do that, or...
No, I don't believe so. I can get exact number, I haven't done that yet.
I just hate to see you guys, I hate to see you guys spend a ton of money on that and then...
I don't disagree, but I, but I think otherwise, we could end up with, you know, end up with getting a lot more topsoil than we need as well potentially, right? 'Cause if you had, if you had to put a foot on one end and four inches on the other, to get it to...
And how you're gonna determine that is you're gonna go out there with a shovel.
Right.
And you're gonna do what I did at the Bagnell school, you're gonna do a grid.
Yeah.
You take a grid of the, the area you wanna do.
Yeah.
Put a grid down.
Yeah.
And go out there with a shovel and just start going across with a shovel and take a tape measure and see how much you got, six inches, four inches, like over the Bagnell. Everyone said there's no loom there, there's, there's eight inches of loom there, it's sandy loom.
Yeah.
It's, it doesn't have enough humans. So, you guys could do it yourself is what I'm saying, and you're volunteered, you probably don't wanna have to, but it's pretty simple to grid it out. You do a grid and you get, so at this end, oh, well, I only got two inches or whatever, you know what I mean? So, that would be one way of doing it. And then like you talked about, if the land's, the topo's not good.
Right.
Then you'd have to bring in, probably rototill the whole thing first or turn it over, then get it flat and what have you. I just hate to see you, if, if the numbers are going down and bids are coming in more, which now everyone is saying we're going with this new prevailing wage thing that we're required to do.
Right.
If our bids are gonna keep coming in, we're not gonna have a lot of money left, so...
No, I don't disagree.
And if you guys, if you guys wanted a hand with that, I would come down and help you do that, as far as that, to try and save you some money.
Okay.
One day.
Yeah.
But...
I'd like to, if I can, can I, can I find out what it would cost for us?
Sure, go right ahead, yeah.
I think that, that would be...
Yeah.
The best...
Yep.
'Cause I'm certainly no expert at, at knowing exactly how to lay out that. And I know, you know, you do that more for a living.
Yeah.
But I think that would make more sense for us overall.
Sure.
Since we got a, a pretty big area to cover.
Yeah, and you have, you have more than one field. I mean, what field are you guys gonna try and get done first? The, the, um, the main, the main, the main field down there?
Yeah, the one that would be closest to the existing softball field?
Yeah, the utility field there?
And, and the utility is next to that.
No, they're putting a new softball field in.
Oh, the new softball field, completely new?
Yes.
Oh, so I'm thinking they're doing the utility field.
Well, that's part of the irrigation, both actually, but that'll be part of, but the one is the...
You're trying to complete one, complete softball?
Exactly right.
Okay, so, yeah. You may wanna get an engineer involved then, I'm thinking something totally different.
Yeah.
'Cause now they can turn around and they can say, okay, get a set of specs.
Right.
Drawn up.
Yeah.
So, it's edged in stone and they bid off of that sheet, would be a lot easier.
Exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about something totally different.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, so, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that's okay. So, so then based upon that, then we'd, you know, work with Denise, we'd go out to bid for those components of it to get the, the topsoil done, the grading done for the, for it, the topsoil done, the grading done for it, as well as the irrigation putting, so that'd be our next, next step.
Okay, so we really, to go forward, we don't have any, any end numbers, we don't really have any bidding. What I was thinking is, when the new fiscal year comes up, if we need to go after some more CPA money, which what a, what a perfect place to spend it and get the project done.
Yep.
Hopefully we can get a plan together.
That's why we want to kind of move on this step now.
Right.
To get that, that in place.
Right. Okay.
Clearly, planting grass in the summer doesn't work, right, so we have to wait till the fall to get it done, but-
End of August is good.
Yeah, so we want to get all those pieces lined up so we can do that.
Okay. Anyone have anything else so far?
Why so much for a well, seems like a lot.
What's that?
It does, I agree.
I think you can put a well on fifteen grand, am I on another planet, I mean, it was like-
It was actually the pump, the digging of the well was like eighteen thousand, and the rest of the money was the pump.
Big rigs in there, artisan well, dig a hole, you know, drill down, boom, sleeve it, put a pump in it, what, leave, why is that forty-six thousand bucks? Is it prevailing wages, you know, government times three?
Well, prevailing wage is factored in, and I believe the, the well we awarded for Bagnell was sort of the worst-case scenario, digging the farthest, excuse me, the biggest pump to push the most amount of water.
Right.
So that should be the worst-case scenario, we're hoping that the levels come in a little sooner than six hundred feet, we don't need quite as big of a pump, and that the final total will come in less than that, but that's what we were looking for in the spec.
So basically, when you bid these things out when it comes to a well, you're basically bidding out a hypothetical number.
Right, cause how do you know?
You don't know, you don't know, they might hit water at three hundred feet, they might hit four hundred feet, or they may go eight hundred feet. It's a hypothetical number.
Could it be a twenty-five thousand dollar well, or the pumps?
It could be, they could hit water real quick, you know what I mean?
Pumps are expensive.
Pumps are expensive, and they're gonna put a casing down in there, the casing costs money, but what I'm saying is, you don't know until the drilling gets started. And usually what they'll do is your low number, if you said five hundred feet, they'll, they'll say, okay, we're at five hundred feet, we haven't hit water, we estimate we might go to six hundred feet, or whatever, so it's a hypothetical number, it's basically a bidding, a number for bidding in, in, in your components, is basically what it is.
This is a super deluxe well.
No, what it is, is what-
It's higher capacity than drinking water at your house, cause I've never heard anyone's, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Kind of money to put a well on.
It's a lot higher than you run your house watering a well.
Double, triple, I mean, how can you quantify?
They do it based on the, on the pound footage, based on the height they have to pull out.
You need a PSI to get the water.
Try to understand the numbers on it.
Right.
You run your house about what, twenty, fifteen, twenty?
Yeah, twenty to forty.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty pounds, right?
Yep, so you're talking, you know, you need between fifty and seventy to get at least five heads to pop in, in a commercial application. You're trying to get, you know, seven to ten to pop, although the thing will be running constantly, you know what I mean? So it is a bigger pump, it's, it's all bigger ingredients and what have you, you know?
The deeper you go, there's more pressure or more water.
No, you just gotta get water, you, you gotta get water, and sometimes you can get down and they gotta frac it, you can maybe, they can maybe frac it and get the water to come. Like I say, right now, you got your well, you got your components, as far as the drilling goes, you hope they're gonna get the water quicker.
Right.
Over there, they may, Bagnell, they may have to go deeper, you don't know.
So that's a high number, so it's not like the bathroom, you know, we gotta come back.
Number is the number that Denise got at the Bagnell, unless, unless it could go higher, unless they hit six hundred feet, and they don't hit water, then we're in trouble, then we tell them to stop, and we gotta regroup and talk about it.
Hit water at six hundred feet, where you going?
Well, it's been done before, and they haven't hit, they haven't hit it at six hundred feet. Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, just as a, as a follow-up and a good point. Who, you go six hundred feet, and they don't hit water, who in town tells them, yeah, stop, or yeah, go a hundred, go a hundred and fifty more feet?
Well, I can tell you this, I'm gonna be, when they, I told Denise, when they start drilling the Bagnell, I'm gonna go down there daily and talk with them and, and, and work with them. And at the pre-bid conference, I met the gentleman, he actually is the one that ended up winning it, I'm gonna keep an eye on it. But, I mean, someone's gotta be there, and, and then we can, Denise could say, when it starts, you know, you get to five hundred feet, you're not there, you call me, I mean, we have to have the conversation.
Right.
You just, you gotta make sure that conversation's there.
Well, cause the bids for up to six hundred feet.
So they're not gonna, they're not gonna drill without.
Right, exactly.
Or go over.
Right.
What would the cost of the water be if you just tapped into town water, I mean, what's the break even on the well if it's forty-six grand?
Well, I can tell you the Bagnell School, they won't let us tap.
Would it be a couple grand a year, and that's twenty-three years of water usage?
Can we even tap into it, I don't even know.
I believe at Bagnell,
Break point on that.
If I remember correctly, last summer, their water bill was nine thousand dollars because of the water slides and activities that took place over the summer.
Wow.
Nine grand. So break even would be five years.
They got, the, the superintendent of schools told us in a meeting, it was four thousand dollars in one month.
Yeah, so they, so Bagnell would not let us use water anymore for the summer program unless we started paying for it because of the expense they've incurred, which is why we were going.
And the water department can't exempt us because it's town usage?
We pay for this building.
So Dan, the other thing we looked at is, is pulling water out of the river.
If it was, you know, an offset of some sort.
Yeah, we looked at pulling water out of the river as, as an option, that's right now more expensive than doing the well.
Really?
But if the well comes in much higher, we're gonna be at the same point.
Cause it doesn't have to be spring water.
Does anyone know the well?
Just filtered water.
Yeah, actually, I know the high school, that's how they do it, and they actually had a little water testing done on the river.
Yeah.
Last year, and it's actually, it's not drinkable water, but it's, yeah, it's fine for that.
Does anyone know what the well down there now, how many feet they hit water at the well that was down there?
I don't know that, do you?
I don't know, I know they went deeper than they thought they were gonna have to.
Really? Alright, well, I guess that's the conversation on that, go, go forward, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's pretty much what I had for you right now.
Okay. Alright, so, conversation we've been having with the town, and problems we've been having and what have you, is that project over there, it's going on and what have you, and I think Adam was saying last time we were in, that we were, I said maybe we should get a group of people, one from maybe the boat ramp, one from the rec, one from here, one from there, and build a group of people that can watch the project or be involved in the project going forward, because a lot of people say they didn't have the say they wanted to have in it.
Right.
So that's why I said, well, have you guys come before us. I don't personally, I think it should be a group of people made up of individuals, not all from the rec. The, the boat ramp, the pines, I mean, some of the youth groups, et cetera, et cetera. To get that group and, and, and watch the project or, you know, work with you guys and say, okay, you know, where are we going, what do we want to do, you know what I mean?
Right.
And they'd be kind of the, I guess the liaisons over, I don't know, I mean, just a conversation to try and stop all the antics that have been going on, and what have you. I know that we had this back in the fall, this discussion, and the road commissioner said he would take care of the bathroom, it would be taken care of, and he said he would take care of the boat ramp. And, and that's what he was gonna do, and he was under the understanding, and that's what I believe he has been working on. I, I think the boat ramp has been put off until November, but I see the construction going on with the bathroom and what have you, so I think he's keeping his word, and that's going on. The other work, I think Denise, you just do the maintenance, pay the maintenance bills that come through and what have you, and we had froze two hundred thousand dollars in an account, because I was worried that that money's gonna drop and we're gonna have nothing.
Right.
So she's been trying to pay the bills and be conservative, how the money gets spent, but I think as, where the rec committee should come in, this is me, the board can speak up in a minute, I think we need to find revenue. I think we need to start to find a way to come up with revenue, if we're gonna take that on, it's gonna be our, ultimately our perfect piece of property, and everyone's gonna get on and enjoy it, I think we need to find a way to come up with some revenue. One would be possibly, I don't know how many people use the place, if someone from out of town's using the place, I think we should start looking at user fees, not for people in Groveland, not for Groveland teams, if someone from out town, outside of town, user fees. Another way of doing it would be, and it's maybe not a lot of money, start renting out science space, or someone had mentioned in one of our meetings, maybe having like Trinity, or one of these big companies put a sign there, or whatever. I think we just gotta start looking at ways as a committee to try and raise some revenue to keep that place afloat. I know two hundred thousand, I don't know what we're down to now, but I don't think it's gonna take us long, you know, maybe three, four years, and we're gonna be out of money. Unless we start, as a board, we decide to start taking money out of the annual budget and putting it aside, however we do it. Go ahead, Dan.
I think what you said, I mean, we have to start the ball in motion on looking at sponsorships, and user fees, and maybe a committee that has a vested interest in each user group can be represented there.
Sure.
So it's not, you know, we all have jobs here, so it's not like-
Right.
Can't do everything, so I don't know, they just delegate past the block, but,
Right.
You know, if, if, if people are interested in a committee, and they can run it, similar to like, you know, GBL runs Washington Park, well, I don't think that's a drain on the tax payers, it certainly doesn't impact the, you know, the omnibus budget, so something along that model with compliance being implemented in terms of, you know, accountability for money. If there was a committee for that, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, whatever, the XYZ company, Pines Recreation Area, if they want to pay for a sponsorship for a year, I mean, I wouldn't be offended by that.
Right.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I'm not against the Elon lights, but some people are, you know, so as long as it was tasteful and met community standards, I think people might be receptive to that. And if it keeps your taxes down, and it makes that, you know, an A-plus facility down there, I think we need to explore that. You know, the sponsorship down to Washington Park, it's, you know, if it was two fifty a sign or something like that, you know, it's, it'd raise some money.
Sure.
So you get, you know, ten of those, it's twenty-five hundred, you get twenty of them, there's five thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, bigger the sign, bigger the sponsorship.
So the idea is like to have all the interested groups be part of that, is that what the, and figure out how to make that work?
It's a lot of groups.
There are a lot of, well, that's-
Football, you've got high school baseball, Bay Ruth baseball, softball, lacrosse, girls hockey, how many did I just name, six, seven?
Six, seven, yeah.
Soccer.
Soccer.
But let's just say for, it's, there's six represented groups, you know?
Thank you, we keep going, there's a lot of groups.
They either generate user fees, or they go out and sell sponsorship, it's kind of like one of those things, you know?
One of the-
You know, I mean, they, they can figure it out, but it's either A, come together, or, you know, you're gonna have to raise taxes or come up with user fees for each group. I mean, what do you want to do, you want to say to football, you know, we need three thousand dollars from you this year? And you're gonna pass that on to the parents and the kids, and it's another, another silent tax that you were cutting a check for, it's real money.
Right.
Adds up, wouldn't you?
Sure.
So, you know, the alternative is, you know.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, and, and defray the cost, and keep the cost of your kid playing football down to eighty bucks, or I don't even know what they judge, football, but, you know.
Eighty bucks.
Baseball's pretty cheap, you know, basketball's cheap.
One of the things that I was trying to think-
But if you don't do that, Bill, what's, what's the, what is the alternative if we don't go in that direction?
The direction that we need to go in.
We'll have to budget, what, thirty grand a year for making style there?
Denise would have that number, but I think, I think as, as a, as a committee, rec committee, or a committee, whatever you want to call it, I think it's time that we have to start looking at revenue, to find revenue, to keep that place operating. Now, does the rec committee want to take that burden on, or do they want to form another committee? But what I had said a few weeks ago was, with the Center Street property, I was saying, like Chesterton. Chesterton could turn around, if they would, and enter an agreement with the town of Groveland, that they could put their name on it, we can call it the Chesterton Park, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm just talking that hypothetically here.
Sure.
So now they could turn around and say, hey, they have their worldwide corporate people coming in, they use the facility, whatever, they've invested in it, we've invested in it, it's a good thing. Down here, the same thing, maybe we could do a one-year, one year at a time, or maybe two years at a time, where say Dunn Landscaping pays the money for that name, it's the Pines, Dunn's, Pines Recreation Facility. So they're getting a good chunk of money down there to keep their name for advertising, et cetera. I don't know if it would work, just a thought, but I mean, I think we're not looking for pennies, I think we're looking for dollars to make that, and to get the money built up.
Yeah.
And that's what I was thinking, and I think we need to go, we need to, and I'm not saying, I'm not, because you guys are in front of me, I'm not picking on you guys at all.
Sure, no, I understand that.
There's been so much negative down there, and things just don't, it's, it's, every time it comes before us, it's like, there's a problem. But I'm just gonna say, there's a problem, there's always a problem, let's try to get something positive going, that's all I'm saying. Positive is, we gotta get some revenue and what have you, and I understand we don't need to be down there throwing money away and blowing money, I agree, I'm the forefront. I agree, I think we need to start and move this thing forward. That's why I had you guys, hopefully you guys can head this up, or whatever, maybe you'd say to me, no, Bill, we're, we're rec committee, we don't do that, we don't, you know what I mean?
So I think it's worth us discussing as a committee, yeah.
Definitely, go ahead.
Well, it's, it's been fragmented, and there are multiple groups, and it's kind of like one of these, you know, who's doing what, and it's been disorganized, so, you know, not, not in, in each component of it, each, I'm not saying people aren't doing their respective jobs, but it's not centralized. So, you know, maybe we do need, but if it isn't gonna be a committee that handles it, then ultimately would end up back here, and it would probably, you know, end up with a rec director.
Right.
You know, and payroll.
Exactly.
And, and, and expenditure, payroll, and the budget, and then maybe that person could be in charge of going out and, and, and raising revenues, I mean, but somehow, some way, I would like to see minimal impact on taxpayers. User groups should have some vested interest in trying to help us out here, we're all in it together. You know, it could be absolutely free, and then you just raise taxes, but I don't, there's gonna be a backlash to that.
But the pro, the pro, it has to grow, the project has to grow, it's not gonna happen overnight, we gotta, bits and pieces, we're gonna grow, like you said, we're gonna do the well, we're gonna do this, so we're gonna constantly have an investment in that, and we're gonna do, maybe do a dog park, water park, et cetera, we gotta, we can't keep going after CPA money, I mean, we do, but we don't, you know what I'm saying, we gotta make the property start being generated. And I'm not saying it's gonna be a profitable thing, but at least cover its expenses.
So if you, if you look at kind of the history, right, of the Pines, I mean, that's kind of what happened, right, I mean, baseball took care of the baseball field, we took care of the softball field, got the dugout's built, graded the, the fields.
Yep.
So that was all volunteer work, that's done that over the years, right?
This is a little bit bigger than-
Yeah, oh, absolutely, no, I agree, so I'm saying is now, it's evolving down there into something bigger.
Exactly.
So now we have more groups that are using it as well, which is great for the town.
Right.
So now it's a matter of, can we put together something that you get coordination among the groups as to what needs to be done, what's gonna be the cost too, to figure that out, right?
And one thing I'm gonna say, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pick on Denise and Bob, but everyone comes into the selectmen, and they're criticizing, you know, money's being spent, and, and I'm not saying, I'm just, without trying to dig into this too deeply, two people are running that place right now, basically Denise and the road commissioner. He's doing his thing, she's paying her bills, et cetera, et cetera, there is no direction, I'm not saying neither one of them are doing wrong, they're not, they're doing, what, they're trying to hold the thing together. We need to go to the next step and, and, and either get ownership, somebody needs to take ownership for that, and say, okay, like, GBL took ownership for Washington Park, we need to get someone to take ownership, and I think everyone was before us, what a perfect group, rec. I mean, if they're willing to do it, I mean, that would be it, and maybe, like Dan just made a comment, maybe that's, I'm asking too much, and maybe we, we look at a, a rec twenty-hour, a week rec person, I don't know, I mean, like you said, maybe we, you could go in as a committee, talk about it.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that.
Come back to us again, now that, we're thinking, we're trying to go on, you know, and work with you guys, however we do it, you know?
Sure.
I just think that it's a good facility, it's coming along great, and I think we need to get a good grasp on it and, and move it. I know, I know Ed wanted to talk.
Yeah, I kinda, I, I want to touch upon what Dan had mentioned about maybe time for a rec director. The, the recreation facilities in, in the town of Groveland are, are top-notch, and, and they keep expanding. And I, I think it's putting a, a lot of responsibility on, on a volunteer group, they've, they've been excellent, but I think that it's becoming expanded, it's becoming a lot of responsibility, and I personally think that we need a, a point person to, to be, to be running, running the pines, running Washington Park, running down on Center Street, running the, the soccer fields. A one-point person running them all, I think there's a lot of responsibility for, for a volunteer committee, because we've expanded over the last several years. They've been doing a fantastic job, but it, it's a lot for just a volunteer group. And I, I, I like that idea that Dan had, somehow maybe through user fees or something, a, so maybe we think about some kind of a director, to be, to be the point person to, to handle all that.
Go ahead.
If the rec committee is, I'm not saying what, what would the responsibilities be down there? I mean, would we, cause right now we have softball and basketball, we have no, I don't want to say control, but we have no-
Oversight.
Oversight, so if someone wants to use the pines, you know, it's jockey position who got in first. I mean, would we have, obviously you have final say, but would we have, okay, this is what we need to do, this is, would we have, I don't want to say the power, but oversight to do what we need to do, get it done?
You would ultimately, hopefully, we'll discuss it, but if you guys took this on, hopefully you'd have ownership, that's, you guys are gonna basically run it. I don't, I don't want to say the wrong things, I always get criticized for saying the wrong things, but, go ahead.
So I think from my perspective, one of the issues I have is, I get emails from every different group saying, we need four thousand dollars to replace this, we need three thousand dollars to replace that, I don't know anything that goes on down there. My feeling would be if the recreation, you know, weighed in on those and said, yes, baseball needs this right now, or next, we can push that off, push this off until next year. All I know is requests come into me like crazy for work that needs to be done, and I can't prioritize, but we only have a limited amount of money, and it would be good to have someone, some group, something to say.
They would come to you guys with all their proposals and all their stuff, as a board, you guys would sit down and hash this all out, discuss it, see what hits the top of the list, and what needs to come forward, that's what your job would be, then.
And then come to Denise or you guys.
Us or Denise, and then we'd talk about it, and personally, I, I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm a dictator, but personally, and I said this to Denise, I haven't talked to the road commissioner, but personally, I've told her that she's paying bills down there, and she's doing what she's supposed to do, but everyone complains, and like she just said, I get a bill for forty-seven hundred bucks to go down there and redo the fields, she's paying the bill, and you know, like I said, maybe she needs to come talk to the selectmen, needs to talk to a board, like she said, I have no one to talk to, she just said it, you heard her. She has no one to talk to about it, and she's paying the bills, and she thinks she's doing the right thing, but at one point, maybe the selectmen need it for the time being until we get this in place, maybe any big purchase, like I told her, ask us about it, we okay it for the time being until we get something in place.
Can you put something in writing for us that we can go back and discuss with the committee of what you're looking for? From, that the responsibilities would be, that will do coordination of schedules, will be the point person, will be, you know, if someone needs repairs, we can-
All I want you guys, it's simple as this, I want you to be able to find, either you guys are a group of people that are willing to do what GBL does. You guys would, anyone in that property would come talk to you guys as a committee, you'd sit down, like, you'd meet once a month, or twice a month, whatever it takes, busy season, maybe twice a month, offseason, once a month, once, whatever, they would come to you and say, okay, you know, we, you guys say, okay, six fields are gonna, six people need to use those fields, you guys categorize them or whatever. We know that we need to put lights in, we need to have the saw, we need fertilizing, you guys go out and get the bids, you know, right now I think Denise does it.
But they can't, they can't bid.
No, but I'm saying, they would come to you with the proposals, and you would be the procurement officer who would handle that.
Just the pines? Just the pines?
Pines.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just wanna make sure. I don't wanna mess up with these other.
Well, no, because soccer.
Let's get this rolling, maybe we can expand it if it works out or whatever, but I don't think I really wanna, I think this is the, this is the place we need to put the energy right now. I think everything else is kinda running pretty good, um, I think this is the place we need to put the energy.
I think the pines is, is a unique place in such that it, it does play host to so many different venues, where Shanahan Field is basically GYS.
Yep.
Right. Washington Park is, is almost exclusively GBL.
Right.
But the uniqueness of the pines where it hosts so many different groups.
Right.
From so many different age categories, it does become cumbersome upon the groups to, you know, when they need something, who do we go to?
Right.
There is no one person in the town that, you know, like a lot of towns have a recreation department and they pick up the phone, they get it to hold, "Hey, you know, we need the grass cutter, we need a mound fixed," or, "We need a, a net put on the basketball court." There's, you know, we don't have anybody like that that would, wants to take ownership of that and say, "I can direct that, or I can figure that out and we can solve your problem."
All right, so, go ahead, Bill. I know I'm rattling here, but one of my, one of my thoughts was, and I don't think it's tomorrow, it's gonna be down the road, but, and maybe Denise will straighten me out. My thought would be, for that property, let's just say, I'm talking hypothetical, you put a hatch shell down there, right? We get the money, we put a hatch shell. So, what happens on a Saturday night in July, we turn around and we sell tickets to a band or something, you know what I mean? Now the property's now generating money, you know what I'm trying to say? Maybe we're not gonna get rich, but if we can cover and flatline and keep our expenses paid, whatever. Maybe we do, um, when the boat ramp gets done, we do a weekend where people bring their boat down and we have this boat parade or a boat, um, show or something. Everyone pays 10 bucks to bring their boat down there, I know it's not a lot of money, but.
Regatta.
Something, something that we can start using the property to generate money that way as well. So, I think we need to get this committee together, or group of people together with the thoughts, you know what I mean? And that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
And I think, like, Bill was just saying, we're lacking that, you know what I mean?
No, like we said, it's, it, the, the pines has gotten bigger now, which is great.
Right.
So, so, recommendation would be that we get together for a meeting and then we come back to you guys with the time.
Now that you've had the conversation with us.
Right.
And like I said, it, it, please come to us whenever you have this, because us talking to you, you talking to us, we're gonna be able to get this done, we're gonna be able to figure it all out, you know what I mean? And I think that's what we've been lacking, I think we've been lacking the conversation back and forth because one group's down there, "Well, I don't know what I should do," and Denise is doing her thing and Bob's doing his thing. And unfortunately, I don't think we're all clashing and that's where we're missing.
Right.
And I think if we can do that, I think we'll be fine, you know what I mean? And unfortunately, you know, maybe it won't, but I'm, I'm just hoping it will. Go ahead, Dan.
Denise, so, structure-wise, I mean, certainly we could add a line item through special town meeting or town meeting and add rec department and a budget. You know, go in that direction, but, you know, would it make sense for this flood, like, uh, new committee, maybe the, or the former committee, have them elect the chairman and then have a revolver to council over the VC park so that they can have some, uh, authority to, um, you know, go sell some sponsorships and, and, and get a, an account going. Uh, would, would that be, you know, the, the, the more taxpayer-friendly way to, and, and bureaucratic, you know, streamlined method to, uh, see how this thing goes? And it could always be reeled in and added to the, the budget, like we're contemplating for maybe the, uh, the summer program there because we have some limitations on that revolving, uh, um, account statute, so anyways.
Yeah, I actually recommended that two years ago when I first started here, that I think that's what needs to happen with recreation, is there needs to be a revolving account that you're generating enough revenue to cover its expenses. I think what you need to figure out, though, is, um, what expenses you're going to charge to recreation versus, you know, or whatever this group may be. Um, versus, you know, they have their own programs that they run, so are they incorporating softball and baseball under the same umbrella? Or are we sort of gonna form a different, I'm sorry, just basketball, right? Basketball and softball?
Basketball, softball, yeah.
So, maybe we need to have that in a different group, because then you don't wanna intermingle the money from those groups into our revolving account. So, those are the things that still need to be worked out.
But this is a good start that, you know, like we said, we'll come back, so we'll, we'll set a time.
Awesome.
So, what you're saying is, let's say there's six, six groups and six fields down there. You know, the softball, Babe Ruth, this basketball, I don't know if there's any tennis down there, boat ramp.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse, football.
Yep.
Let's just say you had X amount of groups there, you could have, what, six revolving accounts and say, "Here, you maintain your field and you just worry about yourself type of thing?"
No, no, that's not what you're saying.
I don't think that would work at that facility.
No.
No, what I'm saying is.
They'd, they'd have money, they'd have money and they'd, and it would all end up over here ultimately.
Right, I mean, that's.
You'd have competing interests, if, if softball, for instance, raised revenue and sold sponsorship, they will, I don't speak for them, but I, I, I probably, I wouldn't expect that they would want that to go into the, the Babe Ruth field.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying is where, where they, where recreation.
The fruits of your labor should, should end up.
Where recreation specifically handles a softball team and a basketball team, we need to sort of figure out that organization. Would they continue to oversee those groups, because then if they're raising money for the pines in general, then we're starting to intermingle what they're doing as recreation versus this new committee and their money.
Right.
So, I think those are the things we need to figure out, is what expenses would this revolving account cover? And then we need to figure out what their group handles anyways with their own money, because you don't wanna sort of merge the two.
I think it would be, general maintenance would have to be covered by all of the groups, that's what we're looking at.
Figure out the maintenance and piece of each one.
You know what I'm saying, whether or not they buy a particular uniform or something, I mean, that's the individual group if they want.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
戴着 hats and helmets and equipment, that's specific. But just lawn maintenance, parking lot maintenance, paying the electric bill down there, that seems to me that that could be shared and somehow prorated by, 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 by person, by, by athlete, you know?
Right.
A hundred athletes in the, in this group, you know, uh, uh, and then, you know, 200 in this group, I mean, it can be, it could be allocated.
Well, and I think that's what the ultimate goal would be, is to figure out what the expenses are in a year. You know, as the fields expand and we add more water, I mean, granted, that'll be a well, but electricity, if we add additional lights, things like that, you'll have to figure out what the true costs are for the year and figure out either how many groups or how many fields there are and divided by fields to come up with a reasonable allocation to then figure out how we're gonna get revenue per field or per overall.
Right.
Right.
And one other, I'll let you go with this, one other thought was, if you take the, um, the stadium, the Haverhill Stadium, and I know we're not there yet, but just down the road outlook, they have artificial turf, it's run by the Haverhill, school department runs that whole facility, believe it or not.
Okay.
And they actually lease space out to that place, they start in early March when the snow's off of it, they snowblow it, they start leasing space. So, this facility over here, I'm not saying we're gonna have artificial grass, but if we have an extra field we build ultimately and we don't need it and, and we know there's some outside, uh, ball, ball leagues or whatever, they wanna rent some space, now we can make money there as well. This is what I'm looking for this whole committee group or whatever to start looking into.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Now we start generating money faster, you know what I mean? And, and, um, it's a lot of work as volunteers and what have you, maybe that's too, we're asking too much and maybe we gotta go look at a twenty-hour-a-week rec director um, that would do this and put this, implement it. I don't, I would say if you guys can sit down as a committee and come back to us, that would be awesome, you know? Ed, I think wanted to say something.
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll just correct you.
Okay.
Uh, the Haverhill Stadium is under the stadium commission.
Well, I just did work for him and I, the, um, maybe it is, but the school committee paid me.
Yeah, 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 but it's, they have a separate committee.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't know.
Separate stadium commission.
Whatever, but the bills get paid to the school.
Yeah, 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 they run it.
Okay. Do you have any else, Dan?
No, we just gotta get the ball rolling, I mean, is there interest in that, in forming a committee?
Okay.
Or is no one not wanting to do it?
Right, that's, that's what our next step is.
They want the town hall to run the show.
Right, I understand.
Delegate or control.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill?
Just talking about revenue.
Yeah.
I look at the number of people down there, almost on a daily basis, other than the dead of winter, boaters, lacrosse, football, baseball, basketball. You throw a little kiosk down there, sell ice to the boaters, sell hot chocolate to the football kids, sell hamburgers and hot dogs to the baseball kids, you're gonna have more revenue than you know what to do with. Cause right now you go down there and, and the games last long, people are thirsty, the boaters are coming in and out, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a revenue stream that, you've got a captive audience when they're, once they're there, right? They're not gonna leave to go somewhere else if they can walk next door and buy two five-pound bags of ice before they go out in their boat, makes it nice and easy for them.
Bill, I just have two things, so.
Sure.
Um, when the infrastructure work was done, we actually put in, um, infrastructure for a future concession stand, so there is the infrastructure available if we wanted to build something. Um, the second thing I will just say to, to the number of groups, um, there is actually no availability on any field, including the nonfields, until November. Every single field is booked all summer, all fall, even the grass that's not a field is being booked now, so.
Right.
That, that facility is at capacity, that's how much it's being used.
That's great.
Yeah, other than the dead of winter.
Other than the dead of winter.
So, we need to, we just need to get it, get it rolling, get some revenue. Thank you, everyone, thank you, I'm a committee.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Yeah, okay, so, moving forward here, we have, um, boards and committee annual appointments. So, um, I'm gonna start by going down through the list, and if someone has something they wanna talk about, um, we can talk about it.
May I come up on a few before you start?
Sure.
Um, so, I'm gonna take a few off your list, um, as you go down, just because they will come over next, next meeting with the police department's annual reappointment list, he does a big chunk of those.
Okay.
Um, and, um, there are two on here that are, um, up this year, but they are community preservation, so they are appointed by their respective committee. Um, and then the only other thing I'm gonna say is the very top one, the ADA coordinator. If I may make a recommendation to you all, um, that is required under the law, we are required to have an ADA coordinator and we do not.
What is an ADA coordinator?
American with disabilities.
So, the handicap ramps and all that stuff.
So, I did some research and 90% of the ADA coordinators, coordinators are building inspectors.
Yep.
And our building inspector is the ADA coordinator and is other community. So, I would recommend that you appoint Sam Jocelyn to that role, cause we do not have anybody and we need to designate someone with the state.
Do we have to pay extra money?
No, it's just a, just an appointment.
Is he going to accept it?
I didn't ask him, but he will. He's good like that. He does it anyways, he's familiar with the code, he knows what's required. It's just really a legal requirement that if someone wants to complain about handicap accessibility in a public way, they have somebody to go to. And we were contacted by.
So, that makes sense.
The Mass Commission on Disability, uh, for not having one, so.
Okay.
That's my only, um, recommendation.
Seems like a nice guy to go with a complaint, you know, it's just dumb.
Yeah, I think he can do it. All right, so, are you all set, were you all set? Okay, so we'll start with the ADA coordinator, um, are we good with having Sam Jocelyn, the building inspector, do it?
Um, Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, how, how do you wanna do this? You wanna, uh, e- take a, a vote on each one as we go?
Each one, cause last time we did it, we did it as a group and it wasn't, it was, I wanted to do it individually.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint Sam Jocelyn, uh, ADA, ADA coordinator with a term expiring 6/32/16.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, they should all be 17, this is the current expiration.
Oh, 17.
The new term will be 17 for all of these.
All right. All right, um, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so, um, we have the housing authority, Bruce Adams, which I, is he still or is he not?
So, it's, it is the Affordable Housing Committee, this is not the Housing Authority.
Affordable Housing Committee, okay.
Um, the last I spoke to Bruce, he was willing to stay on until the two new members, um, Erin and Melissa got up to speed.
Okay.
I don't think they meet that often, so I haven't really touched base with him to see if he's still willing to serve. He does not need to live in town to be appointed because it's an appointed position, so it's really.
Okay.
If you'd like him to continue, um, you can appoint him or reappoint him and I will follow up with him.
Well, I'm, I'm personally good with all, all four of them.
How about pointing out to, to the people that there is a vacancy, uh, if anybody, uh, is interested on the Affordable Housing Committee?
Oh, yeah, I see that now, okay, you're, you're right.
Uh.
So, we need one, we need one appointed position for the affordable housing, if anyone out there wants to join, we have one seat open.
And, um, I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Bruce Adams, Erin Merrill, Melissa Covey, and, uh, uh, Bob Gupt, Robert Gupt, Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
One vacancy.
Someone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yes.
All right, okay.
So, I'm gonna take the next group from animal control officer to assistant harbor master off, that'll be on your next meeting.
Okay.
And then, um, I'm gonna also take off the two assistant animal control officers, so you can do the assistant plumbing in there. But the rest of them will be on the next meeting.
Plumbing and gas inspector, I'm good with that. Does someone wanna make a motion or have more discussion on it?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Richard K. Danforth, uh, assistant plumbing inspector until 6/30/2017.
Someone wanna second it?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Okay, moving down the list of the registers, register, um, we have Beth Valani, Jennifer Close, and Laurie LeBlanc. Someone wanna make a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'd like to, uh, put that one off for, uh, till the next meeting.
Okay. Every, and, does someone wanna?
A building inspector. Make a motion, we appoint Sam Jocelyn, uh, building inspector until 6/30/2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yes.
It's still an annual appointment.
Oh.
Can I just ask to have a vote on the last, on Ed's motion to hold off? Can someone just make a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Any, any special reason?
Any special reason he's saying?
Um, yes, uh, so, uh, perhaps some additional, uh, um, people interested in that position.
Okay, um, so, we have a, we have a second, wasn't it? And all in favor to hold?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We have the burial agent, Ian Brody. Can I get a?
Motion to appoint Ian Brody, burial agent.
Okay, second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we have the cable TV advisory board. We have Beth Rose, Ed Watson, John McCormsky, Tracy Guilford, and we have a vacant position on that board, so if anyone wants to join, we have a vacancy. Does someone wanna make a motion to accept those?
Make a motion to accept Ms. Rose, Mr. Watson, Mr. McCormsky, and Ms. Guilford.
Just Buster.
Mister, I'm sorry.
Seconded?
My bad.
Seconded?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Should've known better.
I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Okay, moving down the list, we have capital improvement committee, Kenneth, Kevin Cuniff. And we also have an opening as well on that capital improvement board, so if someone wants to join, we have an opening as well. So, does someone wanna make a motion to approve Kevin Cuniff on the capital improvement?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that, uh, I'll, I'll make that motion, we appoint Kevin Cuniff, uh, to the capital improvement committee, uh, until 6/30/2017.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Um, the capital improvement committee ex official, maybe?
Oficio.
Oficio? Denise Dombrowski. Anyone wanna make a motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, uh, appoint Denise, uh, Dombrowski to the capital improvement committee, uh, ex officio.
What does that mean, help me?
It means I'm on it because of my position as finance director.
So, I can't say no?
You can't.
Okay.
No.
All right, so, can I get a second?
Do you wanna throw it to me?
I, I don't usually attend their meetings, I just meet with Jeff from time to time to talk about it, so, that's fine.
Jeff's not on here, cause he must have got reappointed.
He was reappointed previously, he's not up this year.
Okay, so, everyone, we have a motion on the floor to accept, and someone wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Dan, second it, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
So, the two community preservation, you will not be voting on.
Right. Conservation commission, Kyle Keane and John.
Kabauer.
Kabauer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the Conservation Commission. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, instead of a, a three-year appointment, we appoint these two gentlemen to a, uh, uh, a term expiring September 1st, 2017. And I, I have a reason for it. Excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, 2000, September 1st, 2016, excuse me, you are correct. We've asked the Conservation Commission to make a decision, it goes back to these, these grills down on Center Street. Mr. Chairman, they're not making the decision. We've, we've asked them to make the decision, if they can't make the decision, we're, we're gonna give them two more months, if they can't make the decision, we'll look for other people. And I'll make that motion that, uh, we do it till, uh, September 1st, uh, 2016.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have any input they wanna put on this?
Is there a second of that first?
Oh, I'm sorry, make a second on Ed's motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, seconded for discussion, um, go ahead, on discussion.
Um, what are the rules, I mean, can we change our appointment terms? Or is that a by, a bylaw, uh, uh?
It's probably in the bylaw.
Frame, framework type of thing, so I'll just procedurally wanna clarify that. Do we know, we don't know, should we figure it out and could we maybe put it out for next meeting and figure out what?
All right.
Cause, you know, I hear what Ed's saying, but if we vote on something and procedurally, it's the fact that it's not gonna be effective.
Okay.
So, uh.
Okay.
You with me, Ed?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't know, I don't know if the board can change the term.
Well, how about if I withdraw the motion and motion to table till the next meeting?
Because we're doing others at the next meeting, right? So can we find out? Does anyone know the answer to that question? Because I don't.
I'm sure Mike knows. I can look in the bylaws, so.
Yeah, I think it's bylaw dictated.
Yeah, I thought it was bylaw.
So we're going to do is we'll just put it on, put it on hold to our next group of appointments.
Okay.
Do we need to put a motion on the floor? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just Oh, someone looked that up, Denise, or is that a, you know, it's not legal counsel question?
Okay, so the issue is, I, I'll let Ed talk because
Well, we're in discussion.
Bill wants to be brought to speed.
We're in discussion mode right now, right?
Right.
So we're not table, yeah.
Oh, Bill, Bill wants to be brought up to speed on it?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
Bill. It was probably, probably early part of last summer. And my timeframe could be off, but it was within the last year, early, after our appointment. I got appointed to the board along with Dan and Mike Wood a year ago, May. And at some point shortly after we got elected, it was brought to our attention that the grills that down on Center Street on Johnson's Pond were pulled out. It was brought up with the, it was under the direction of the fire chief and the somehow
Barbecue grills.
Exactly.
It was an Eagle Scout project.
Exactly. It was an Eagle Scout project that had been there for seven years. Not, never a problem in seven years with fire pits, with the fire, with the grills. The Board of Selectmen weighed in on it and wanted them put back in. The fire chief, I guess
Hold on, we couldn't tell them to put them back in. We didn't have jurisdiction over that land. Conservation has jurisdiction. Go ahead.
And here we are, and I'm going to say nine months later, the Conservation Commission still hasn't said either put them in or take them out. And in addition, we had voted at one meeting that we'd like to see them back, put back in. The Conservation Commission, in nine months, they still can't make a decision. Approximately, maybe ten. So my feeling is, if they can't make a decision on something simple as putting grills in, then maybe we have the wrong people in that position. Maybe we should have some, some sportsmen in addition to environmentalists on the committee. And I want to see some action. I want them to do their job. And right now, it's become embarrassing to the Board of Selectmen that they haven't done their job. And maybe, I know they're going to be bringing it up at a meeting soon on what to do, but they still haven't said whether they should go back in or taken out. And until they do, I'll give them a couple of months. If they can't do it in a couple of months, then let's get some other people on there.
Can you add something to that?
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
My understanding, you know, in terms of, you know, procedural history, that Conservation removed the grills because the fire chief has has the authority, you know, over fire prevention. Under state law, he asked they be removed. Subsequently, we had several discussions on the point. And I believe that the, it was our recommendation that they come up with some rules there, you know, and that we deferred to the fire chief on what they could be. So there might, for instance, be a posting that, you know, you got to notify the fire department, you're going to have a grill down there. It could just be, call this number and say, I'm down here. I'm Dan and I'm going to grill and when I'm down, I'll put it out. You know, it could be as simple as that, but the fire chief was going to come up with rules, you know, whatever signage. And he thought that that had been tentatively approved, if not approved, Bill.
Well, I had come up with a plan. I had come up with some signage. I had met with Mike.
It's all that if, so let's just fall through. So if the, if the fire chief, you know, assented to that compromise or a workout solution there, if you be, then Conservation's initial reason for removing those grills no longer exists. It becomes a more point once the fire chief ascents to a course of action on that. So that's my understanding on it. And I don't know where Conservation stands on this at this point, but I do agree with Ed that we've kind of been in limbo on it. I do think it is a public service issue. I do think there's water access issues down there that may be in play in a bigger picture. Certainly, I, you know, I mean, I was down there on Sunday. I put my canoe in with my kids and we went out and I looked at the area and it seemed like a pretty simple area to control, you know, little barrels. There's barrels down there and there's a couple picnic tables. So I think in terms of public service, the Eagle Scout project ought to be put back. And I agree with Ed. We should find out. And again, you know, you know, Mike's here and he, I'm sure he's going to weigh in on it next, but you know, again, if, you know, we are the appointed authority. Once they're appointed, they act autonomously and they're independent of us. But, you know, like any appointing authority, if we're dissatisfied with the level of service, public service, because that's what we all do or supposed to do, then certainly we don't have to cast our vote in favor. So I think that's Ed's right.
I think, but nicely put.
Thank you. So, what I had done is I had met with the parties involved. I had come up with a suggestion. I can't, we can't as a board tell them what to do. I had said, we'll make up a sign, put on the tree, when we can light and when we're going to put them out. So we came up with this plan. It ended up that it's between the Conservation and the Fire Chief. They were going to talk. They were going to work it out. They were going to get a letter. From my understanding, and it's only been hearsay, the fire chief has now said, yes, you can put them back under what the selectmen had said. And I heard, I saw an email just recently that had gone back, that they're going to have more hearings on it, public hearings with the Conservation. And this is not what we're here tonight to talk about, but now we're on the sidetrack to bring you up to speed. So they're going to have another public hearing. And my point is, is you get the same people complaining down there. The email that I read was to the effect that there's been complaints from the police department. I mean, there's been complaints, but the complaints aren't over fire pits. The complaints are about parked cars, people at nighttime, you know, the calls are eight, nine o'clock at night, six o'clock at night. Nothing to do with fire pits, nothing to do with that area. It's speeding cars, et cetera, et cetera. So my point is, I don't want to get involved in any, I don't want to spend any more public time on it. It's between the Conservation. It's between the Fire Chief. The way I understand it, he's made his decision. They want to have more public hearings. I feel, I agree with these guys. It's spinning and it just keeps spinning. Until someone wants to make a decision and get a solid decision, I agree with them. That's just my opinion. So I wouldn't mind putting it on hold and see what we can do to try and bring up to speed.
Well, I appreciate it.
Okay. Mike, I'm sorry.
Can I?
Okay, real quick, I just, I got to stop.
I just want to clear up that the commission did vote in March not to put the grills back. So we haven't gone around and around. We agreed not to put the grills back because we couldn't get a solid written statement from the fire chief that it was okay. So what we did was, we voted not to put them back. So nothing changed there and we did make a decision. I say that, you know, this idea that we can't make a decision is ridiculous. We made a decision. Now what's going on is, we had a member, because again, I've received comments, let's put it that way, from other people in town, that they want us to reconsider it. So what we did was, we went back to the fire chief. We asked for some written guidance, clear written guidance on it, because up to that point, we had not received it. We're still waiting for that. We're working with the fire chief. I spoke to him tonight. He says he's coming up with something on it. So we decided at our last meeting, in light of those future recommendations from the fire chief, to reconsider it at the request of some of the selectmen that I've spoken to. And so we are willing to reconsider it.
Okay.
And that's what we're planning to do. But I don't understand, and I'll stop, but the thing that I don't understand is how, you know, you can make an appointment based on whether you disagree with the way somebody's going to potentially vote. That seems a little, I don't know, I don't like that idea and I disagree with it. And the other thing is that if you want to have more sportsmen on the commission, send them our way, because we've had an opening for the last year. There's no line of people waiting to get on the Conservation Commission. If everybody leaves, you can be the Conservation Commission and you can decide to put the grills back. And you can also do all the other things that we have to do with the inspections and the filings and everything else. And that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask Mike a question? Where do you have a vacancy? I don't show a vacancy on your board.
Jeff Alton? Yeah.
Isn't on your commission?
No.
I like Mike. Mike and I work together on some things. And I like to argue and I think Mike knows that. But all the way up to the Supreme Court nominations, I mean, people nominate people based upon inclination to go in a certain direction. So I, you know, does it, does it happen at the grassroots level? Probably not, because it's, you know, you, it's a small town. But, but there's a lot of push on this and this was kind of a little, this was one issue that people felt, from what I heard, that they have no control over, that an appointing authority, okay, took that away from them and they were powerless to do something about it. So we're all elected people here and we are accountable to the voters. We could get voted in, we could get voted out, just like that. So if we turned, you know, you know, a silent ear to that, you know, we do have some say in the appointment process, so I think we need to weigh in on it. Once they're appointed, it's too late. I mean, you know, absent clause, you can't, you know, fire somebody from a committee. I mean, I don't think anyone here would do that absent, you know, something egregious, but certainly not on a political issue. But at the appointment level, you know, people hard and fast, I mean, where are you in the spectrum in terms of conservation? Some people are fanatics, others are more reasonable and they're okay to, open to, you know, have people, sportsmen or fishermen access in public lands. And others are like, you know, what, one footprint's too many. So I don't know. I don't know.
Right, so I don't think we should, I don't think we should wait
But can, you know, I'll call up the fire chief, you know.
Well, that's what I was just going to say.
You're working on some regs.
That's exactly what I was just going to say. I was going to say
Can we get a decision on this?
We're not going to, we're not going to not appoint anyone tonight. We're going to put it on hold. I'm going to call him again. I'll have the conversation. Unless you want to call him, that's fine with you.
No, Chairman, I mean, you know
I'm going to call him and say, hey
But this is, this is a hot issue and
I understand.
And it struck a nerve.
I don't want anyone to think they're not going to get reappointed, but I'm going to get some answers. So let's just put it off until the next group of appointments, that's all.
This isn't, this isn't just, in my opinion, a got and variety decision, because it was an Eagle Scout project. It was approved. And I think that has a weight to it, you know. And once you have that public access to take it away
Nothing to do with appointments and
It ought to be, you know, somewhat more input from the public, just an appointed body retracting that right. That's just my personal sentiment on it.
And you're right as far as the Eagle project, and I know that we have a couple of other Eagle projects in town, but I'm just afraid that at some point the Eagle Scouts are going to not want to do a project in Golden because of something like this.
But the point that I'm going to make is, if, if there's going to be more hearings on this and I got an email across my desk saying that there's been some police activity, they've been called down there, I want it to be a fear hearing. I want it to be fear. I don't want to hear that it was a couple parked cars or a speeding car that had nothing to do with that area. That's all I, I want to be able to be fear and heard fairly.
Bill, if it's speeding, how do you connect the dot on speeding equals a barbecue grill?
Right.
I mean, how do you, how do you connect that dot?
You don't.
Because the guy just got through
And the grills aren't there.
Toasting a burger for ten minutes earlier. I mean, it's, then you go after the person. You don't blame the grill.
The grills haven't been there since November. The grills haven't been there. So the problem that's going on down there right now has nothing to do with grills. They haven't been there.
What I, the central, the central issue is, you get some people that live down there and they want to limit the public access to that location. So should the rest of the town acquiesce to that and say, it's your neighborhood and you own that? It's turf wars. I mean, it's turf wars. That's what happens in little towns here. They're everywhere. It's turf wars.
Well, it's just, we're going to hold off until the next group of appointments.
I think we'll, I think, well, if I didn't, I will. I'll make the motion that we hold it off to the next meeting. That'll, that'll give the Finance Director time to see if we can make a, an appointment till September first.
A modification.
Excuse me, Dan?
A modification on the term.
Okay, sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
So I'll make that.
Yeah, I just scrolled through the bylaws when you guys were talking. I don't see it in there, so I'll have to look up and see where that comes from.
Okay, so you have a motion on the floor. Does someone want to second this motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded. And all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Counsel on Aging, we have Kyle Mooch. We have Dorothy DeChera? DeChera?
DeChara.
DeChara. So can you make a motion to accept them?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Kyle Mooch and Dorothy DeChara to the Counsel on Aging until six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
Want to second it?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have the Cultural Council. We have Gail Denning and Susan D'Angelo. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Accept them, okay?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Gail Denning and Susan D'Angelo to the Cultural Council until six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
Actually, that's a six-year term.
Excuse me?
It's a six-year term.
Oh, six-year, I'm sorry. Six-year term.
Okay. So
And the Counsel on Aging was actually a three-year term also, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so all in favor? I mean, where we at now? Where we at? Got a motion?
Yeah.
So we need a second. Second. Anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Dan second it? All in favor? Okay. Earth Removal Enforcement Officer, Site Inspector, Robert Akalian. And that is going to be an annual appointment. Someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. We appoint Robert Akalian, Earth Removal Enforcement Officer, Site Inspector until seven, until six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
Someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Oh, yes.
All in favor?
No.
Okay. All right. Election Constable, Dave Tuttle.
I'll make a motion. We appoint Dave Tuttle, Election Constable, until six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Okay, seconded. And all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to have you skip the Emergency Management Director, because that'll be on your next meeting.
Okay, so we have three vacant positions on the Finance Board, so we really need to try
Two.
Two? Oh, I'm sorry, two. And then we need to appoint William Cook for a three-year term.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. We appoint Bill Cook to a three-year term on the Finance Board.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded. And all in favor?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, this, I think we have more than two vacancies on the Finance Board. If my correction, my recollection was we had four.
Yeah, they're, they just, I put them by term, so we actually have, we do have four, soon to be five, I've been told, so.
Well, I believe it's a conflict of interest that I don't think I can serve on capital, the finance, and this board at the same time without somewhere coming into a conflict that I don't ever want to talk about.
I agree, but we need a quorum at least until the end of the year.
I've actually been beating the streets and I've found two potential volunteers to take my one spot. So hopefully they increase the numbers before
Okay.
We'll get you something.
Okay, so we're all set? Are we moving forward to the forestry ward?
Yes.
Fire warden?
Did we, did we vote?
Yes.
We voted Bill.
Okay. So Robert Lee
There are two on there, yes. You only need one.
We need one. Again, a motion?
I'll make a motion and we appoint Fire Chief Robert Lee twice as the Forest Fire Warden till, on annual appointment to six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
So I'm going to have you skip the Harbor Master. That'll be on the next meeting.
Great.
And that's the last one to skip.
Health Agent, Deborah Ketchin. Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Motion to appoint Deborah Ketchin, Health Agent, till the term expires in six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Health, Health Nurse.
Motion to appoint Anita Wright, Health Nurse, term expires six thirty two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second that.
Seconded. All in favor? What does a health nurse do?
She does a great job.
She only works about six She only works about six hours a week, but she does like blood pressure screenings.
Okay.
She does paperwork, grants, things like that, all the requirements.
All right. Historic Commission, Carl Gusterson and Claire Walsh.
I think it's Carol.
I think it's Carol.
Oh, Carol, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Carol Gusterson.
Motion to appoint Carol Gusterson and Claire Walsh, Historical Commission, appointment of three years, expires
appointment of three years, expiring six thirty two thousand nineteen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Mermack Valley Planning Commission, Robert O'Hanley. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we appoint Bob O'Hanley, uh, one-year term, Mermack Valley Planning Commission till, uh, six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mermack Valley Commission alternate, Robert O'Callaghan. Get a, get a motion?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Bob O'Callaghan, uh, alternate, Mermack Valley Planning Commission, one-year term, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Um, open space and trails committee, Alex Johnson, Jennifer Cottigan, Michael Cordaro, Michael Davis, and Robert Cupshaw. If someone has a problem with any of them, just let me know, but maybe we can do them as a group?
Sure.
Motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, we appoint Alexander Johnson, Jennifer Cottigan, Michael Cordaro, Michael Davis, and, um, Robert Cupshaw to the open space and trails committee. Annual appointment expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Pentucket Regional Finance Committee, Daniel McDonald. Can I get a motion?
Is he qualified?
Kick that guy off.
I thought we did.
Awesome. What did I go for?
But it, uh, I'll make a motion, we appoint Dan McDonald to the Pentucket Regional Finance Committee.
Seconded?
He's done a good job.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
I showed up, they wanted me to be the chairman, I'm like, no.
Plumbing gas inspector, Gerald Vines. Get a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Jerry Vines, uh, plumbing and, plumbing and gas inspector, for one year, expiring seven, uh, six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, we have recreation auxiliary member, Jen O'Malley, and we have two open positions. So, it sounds like the recreation committee's full. Am I correct when I say that?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
You have had some interest in, um, people wanting to be active committee members, not auxiliaries, but there are currently no vacancies.
So, ac-, so it says we have vacant recreation auxiliary member, why couldn't they become an auxiliary member?
The people who expressed interest didn't wanna be auxiliary, they wanted to be voting members.
Oh.
And, um, why don't we, uh, why don't we bring, have the names brought forward for the next meeting?
Okay.
They can vote if there's an absence, I mean, that's how you move on.
Can they, can they be alternates on, make, make that, so they have alternates on that committee?
I can reach out and see if they wanna be an alternate if they, since there are no vacancies.
If they wanna chip in, we really should, should try to get them to chip in, especially we're trying to get a lot going on down there.
Someone takes a night off on vacation, they get the ball of it.
Many hands makes a light work.
Right, many hands in conversation, if they, they invol-, they wanna be involved in the conversation down there, maybe they can't vote, but they may have some good input.
And, and, uh, just as a, as an aside, is it, uh, is it limited to the seven members, or, or, uh, by, uh, by a bylaw?
I don't believe that's by bylaw, no.
Okay, so let's, let's, um, at least get the recreation auxiliary member, Jen O'Malley, taken care of. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we appoint, Jen O-Ma-, uh, O'Malley, uh, recreation auxiliary member till, uh, six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
So, I'll go down through the recreation committee. We have Elise Hunt, Bethany Silva, Daniel Stewart, Doug Deimers, Erin Merrill, Michael Holton, and Pam Blackadad. If there's any problems, speak out. And, um, if not, make a motion. Someone make a motion?
Can we appoint them as a group?
Mm-hmm.
And make a motion, we appoint these seven individuals, uh, aforementioned, we named, uh, to the position of recreation committee for the term of one year, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second? Someone make a second?
I'll second it, but I, I barely heard what you said.
Were you listening?
He, he was just recommending them all as a group.
As a group.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Seconded? All in favor?
No, I'm gonna go abstain.
Okay. Um, we have a right-to-know officer, vacant. What does a right-to-know officer do?
We don't know.
You don't have a right to know?
I believe, um, I believe it has to do with, like, chemicals, um.
Typically OSHA requirements, the right to know, so any chemicals, hazardous material on the sites, they come with safety data sheets, and then there's typically, uh, someone in the corporation or business assigned to be the right-to-know officer in that business, that they should know, uh, all the hazardous, uh, chemicals, what to do in case of a spill.
Yep.
Fire, an incident.
It used to be John Clement, our former fire chief, we haven't had one since either.
That position would be good to go to someone like a firefighter, or someone like.
You'd be the fire chief.
Yeah.
As long as they know.
Right, or someone that knows the position.
How about?
Pretty important, you know?
Yeah, but there's a lot on the fire chief's plate right now, how about?
I know.
One step down from the fire chief, you think he could take it, Kirk, is it?
How about, uh, how about something on the, uh, um, uh, the building inspector? Uh, give him some more responsibility.
Maybe we can put a, maybe we can put a note out.
Yeah, I can certainly email the chief, the fire chief, and see if he has someone that would be.
Qualified.
Qualified to.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, what if, what if we table that till the next meeting, when we do the other?
But in the interim, can we get a letter to both of them parties? Okay? All right, um.
I don't know if he knows hazardous materials, though. And chemicals.
Yeah, there's gotta be someone, between the two of them, if we get a note out to them. Okay, stormwater management committee. Vacant and vacant.
Two vacancies.
And then we have William Carter. Stormwater management.
Uh, if memory serves me correctly, didn't we, didn't we just recently appoint William Carter to the stormwater management committee?
It was probably eight months ago, but yes, it was in this fiscal year.
So, help me out with stormwater management. So, people out there here, to, it's something to do with probably the water department and that kinda stuff?
Stormwater drainage.
Right, okay.
Yep, I think it's, I think it's water department, highway department.
Okay.
But I don't know what the committee actually does, um, they haven't met or had people since I've been here.
All right, so can we get a motion to accept William Carter?
I'll, I'll make the motion, uh, appoint, uh, William Carter.
Okay.
Stormwater management committee.
All in favor? Great, come on. All right, and then we have a superintendent insect pest control, Mark Parento.
So, that falls under the tree warden historically.
Okay.
Mark's our tree warden, and I'll, I'll make a motion, we appoint Mark Parento. Superintendent of Pest, Insect and Pest Control.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Town council, Copeland and Page. Get a motion?
I'll make the motion that we appoint Copeland and Page, uh, PC as town council for one year, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, veterans agent, Michael Ingram. Get a motion? Motion to accept Michael Ingram?
Motion to accept Michael Ingram as veterans agent for the term one year, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Seconded?
He came before us, right?
Yeah, he did.
Yep.
How's that working out? Is, is that?
You're supposed to have set hours.
Hold on one second, I'm.
Turned Monday? Wanted to know if that was working.
How's that working out?
Um, okay.
Has it, has it been on schedule every week?
Not every month, no.
Okay.
Can we, can we, can we hold on that one?
Should we table?
I'd like to hold on it. Okay. I'm gonna hold.
I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Chuck, go ahead.
I mean, you know, before we reappoint, I mean, we asked him to have set hours, I don't know if he said Monday for an hour or something, just across the river, come from April into Golden.
Yeah.
Yes, so it is the.
Veterans here that may not be able to get to April during, when he's there.
It is the third Monday, so if you table it, I can see if he comes in next Monday.
Okay.
Was he non-responsive to our requests, or?
No, he's been in, it's just not, you know, if there's a holiday, we've changed it, we've advertised it in the council on aging newsletter, and then he doesn't come in on the day we've rescheduled it, so.
Is there a matter of, there's no demand comes here, and it's just talking to the wall, and there's no one here, I mean.
No one has come in to see him when he's in here, no, but a need might arise.
To do the job, if he showed up, if he shows up, and he's supposed to be here an hour, and he's here half an hour, they don't show up, maybe he can excuse himself and leave, but at least come and do what you're getting paid to do.
Right, and, and he does bring his laptop when he does come, and, you know, I would hope that he's doing paperwork for us, if we're paying him to be here, that, um, that's part of the hours we pay him for.
It, it's gonna take a while before everybody gets used to it.
But you gotta be here consistently, to let them know you're here.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, can we vote on him being reappointed with a set schedule? I mean, it ought to have strings attached to it.
I agree.
It's a job.
I agree.
You know, I've never had a job that didn't have strings attached to it.
Why don't we hold it till next week, and your guys can think of what you wanna do?
Maybe we need a job description and a, and a schedule, and we'll reappoint you contingent upon your performance. I mean, it ought, it ought to be.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, so why don't we put a hold on it, we'll talk about it again.
I'll make a motion, we hold that, uh, table it till, till the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have the wiring inspector, Albert L. Seavy. Uh, can I get a motion?
Make a motion, we appoint, uh, L. Seavy, wire inspector for one year, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second? Okay, seconded? All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, so we're moving down to zoning board of appeals. Um, we have, um, Casey Bailey, Kathy Franzen, and we have three vacant seats in that, uh, zoning board of appeals, so anyone out there that wants to join, there's three vacant seats.
Are there vacant seats, or are these alternates?
They're vacant. I'm sorry, alternates, alternates. Three, three alternates. Right, yeah. So, we have three open alternate positions.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Casey Bailey and Kathleen Franzen for a three-year term, uh, zoning board of appeals.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm staying as I'm on the board.
Okay, and then we have the zoning enforcement officer, Sam Jawsland. Can I get a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Sam Jawsland, uh, zoning enforcement officer for one year, expiring six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, so, we did the boards and committees, we got down through the one-day liquor license, so, um, did I miss any on that page? Could we move around, I think we're good. Um, so now we're gonna go to any, anyone having an old business? Right?
Old business. Uh, Mr. Chairman, at our, at our last meeting, uh, we, we had, it was a discussion about, uh, the veto room. There's one asked the finance director if, uh, I think she was waiting at that meeting for some, uh, parameters, or, or whatever the correct term would be from the, from the committee. Have you got those to, uh, to, uh, contact? Uh, you haven't got those yet?
No, they were gonna put a priority list together of what needed to be done.
That's what I'm looking for, the pri-, priority list, thank you. Um, nothing yet?
No.
Okay, well, we'll bring that up again next week, next meeting.
Anyone else have anything on that old business?
How about the, um, punch list we were gonna try to create for the Shenanigans to be done? Has that punch list been created, and?
Yes, and, um, community preservation, um, met and authorized money to be spent for the, um, renovations, and now we're working on that phase.
Should be done soon.
Okay, are you all set on that old business, Dan?
Um, I just had a comment about, um, the zoning bylaws and, um, one zoning board of appeals, and just so you know, we have a block shot on, uh, Wednesday to try to get a, uh, a list that you will, uh, present over the point of going on that, like, what we want to change, or improve on that, uh, major some sort of way, so we're working on it, just to relay some.
Is that gonna be a public hearing, or just the board?
No, it's, you know, anybody can come on, yes, it's, you know, we're gonna roll our sleeves up, just go through page by page and look, uh, see what we like and dislike, so that we can, uh, have some input on that, and, uh, see if we can get some resolve on, uh, what's in there, you know, we looked at it, and, you know, can have a certain type of insurance business, you can have a moving there, you can, you can, you can. So, I've commented, it was a vision of utopia was that, you know, so, um, so.
All right.
We're, we're gonna participate in that process, so, that was, uh, I think it's a big issue. It was a warrant article, and it was, you know, taken back, so that it could be worked on, maybe that it was special to tell me.
But, but, but hopefully they're gonna have public hearings on that, aren't they?
Well, the planning board said they would, but, uh, zoning board of appeals, you know, I, I pushed for it, I recommend that we work together, come up with our, you know, consensus, uh, you know, deadline items and settle over the plan, and I think we would participate in those hearings as well with the planning board, but it's gotta, you know, let's say, have a crack at it.
Right.
So, I'm just, I think it should be aware of that, um, you know, that's pretty much, you know, you know, the other thing is, uh, like, uh, Diddy's and I have communicated back and forth with some emails and, you know, well, you can't have, Diddy's and I have communicated the last couple, uh, a week and a half on emails, you know, more compliance, and, and, you know, you, you know, we're all make mistakes, and, and, and I know, you know, it's, it's, everything's a matter of agreement. So, we do have, uh, state public bidding, uh, laws, and, uh, you know, I think that everyone should endeavor to comply, and, uh, I've been asked by people that live in town, you know, looking to, like, on the pines, and some of the, um, contractors, I mean, go through a state bidding process. So, I, I, I think that, um, you know, we, we, we need all, uh, um, departments to comply with the state procurement and bidding laws, and it shouldn't be, uh, you know, any other, uh, any other way, you know, it's the law, so it should consistently apply, and it should apply to all, you know, who just wants to chime in on that, but, um, there were some, uh, I mean, at the last meeting, Bill, I mean, you made a statement, like, you know, and Dawn Green was here, so you, you know, something to the effect that you shouldn't say it was illegal, well, if the law wasn't complied with on the state bidding, and, you know, I'm, I'm not the police, I don't know if it lies, but the law, you know, of course, if relying on civil, I'm not gonna be that person to make that decision, but, you know, even if it's a civil violation, it's still not applied, so, um, it could be illegal in a, um, a civil context. So, I, I, I just think that, whatever the department, whether it be highway, or if it's water, I mean, they just can't use, you know, their favorite vendor without complying with state bidding laws, so, uh, I mean.
I just can't hear you.
It's not working. All that fell on my head.
Hey, we heard you.
All right, I'm done, I'm babbling. So.
You're right, what you're saying, Ian.
That's my two cents.
I think that you, the law is the law, and we always try to do things as the law.
Yeah.
And I agree with you there, but unfortunately, I think what's gonna happen, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I agree with what you're saying one hundred percent, but until we come up with new projects, the ones that are in play right now, I personally think they're all gonna come in over bid, I personally think they're all gonna come in overbid, because we're gonna have to go out and we're gonna have to bid these the right way, and the right way is to bid them with, um, yeah, sure.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, and these jobs were not set up for prevailing wage, so they're all gonna come in wrong, and ultimately, what's gonna happen is, and the new projects come on, they're gonna have to put in prevailing wage, they're gonna have to build it into their project, and they'll start coming online, but in the interim, I think we're gonna have a problem, these bids are all gonna come in too high, and I don't think we should make them, I don't think we should make a, you know, do, do the wrong by the land, the law's the law, and I agree with what you're saying, so.
Well, I, I mean, you know, if, if, if it needs to be a matter of education, then we gotta ramp up on it, you know?
I agree.
I'd take continuing with education, and, you know, you gotta keep up with things, and you you know, there's one thing to do things intentionally wrong, and then there's another thing where you just, you don't know you did it wrong, but once you do know, I, I think then, you know, you, there's more of, uh, you know, uh, responsibility to comply, 'cause you have knowledge, so, um, you know? Um, the people that have been in, in place have been in place for, um, years, if not decades, and, um, and they know the rules. So, I'm being asked to, you know, do something, follow up, I'm elected, and I don't wanna turn the blind eye to anything, I don't wanna make mountains out of molehills, either, but if, uh, you know, there's a cutoff on a state bid, and if it's ten thousand or twenty thousand, well, it's wrong, um, to pay somebody seventy-eight thousand dollars, for instance, and it wasn't put out to bid. So, you know, what do, what do we gotta do to come in compliance, you know, do we have to get the state involved? I mean, do we have to, you know, fly above the clouds and, and go to that level, or do we just, you know, uh, rectify the sys- uh, uh, situation in-house and do the right thing? So, you know, I think it's up to the players involved to, you know, as to what happens next.
I would hopefully-
That's how I see it.
Well, I agree, I would hopefully, if it was me, I would hopefully, like you just said a minute ago, going forward, everything is taken care of going forward, they know what needs to be done, we do what we need to do, but to try and burn the bridges that happened behind us, are we, are we gonna bite our, uh, bite our heads off to spite ourselves, however that saying goes, I don't know.
No, but I, I think to move forward, I mean, you gotta acknowledge what you did wrong in order to correct it, if, if you just, you know, get up and do business as usual every day, and you don't even know, you know, uh, or you don't even acknowledge your own faults, um, then, you know, it's, i- i- history's gonna repeat itself, I'm, I'm, I'm realistic about that, I don't think that's being cynical, if, you know, there's accountability, uh, we're all public officials, you gotta comply with the law, if you don't, um, someone's gonna make you at some point.
Okay. Any input, anyone else have any input on this? Uh, no, okay. Anything else on the old business?
Just one thing, um, I guess I'd like to, uh, make a, a little apology to Ms. Stewart, who was in here last week, um, last meeting, uh, about the, um, Memorial Day ceremony, and, um, I might have made a comment that it was, that was inappropriate, and I wanna apologize for that, I think, um, our veterans are very important, um, they're the reasons why we get to do this, and they shouldn't be, uh, taken for granted, and I, uh, apologize for having missed that event, and I will, um, surely, uh, look forward to it next year and, and, and make sure I, um, I can attend, or give a, uh, very good reason why I cannot, so my apologies, Ms. Stewart, I, uh, I know where you're coming from, and I, uh, it won't happen again.
Thank you. All set on the old business? Okay, so moving forward, under correspondence, we have the minutes from the May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen meeting. We have a letter to Mrs. Delafour regarding two ninety-nine and three oh-one Main Street, Groveland. We have a grant award letter from, for two, twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety dollars to purchase software equipment and implement permitting, e- permitting. We have an email from Joseph D- D. DeMore regarding Memorial Day and the future town events. We have an email from Kathleen Prunia regarding the May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen selectmen's meeting. So if you guys can read those and see what each individual has to say.
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
On the, um, twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety dollars that we received from the community compact, uh, grant, could, could we just, uh, uh, have a comment from the finance director on that, uh, that, that, that's, uh, uh, well, I'll, 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 I'll let you, let you go.
So our building inspector came to me and said there was a grant out there for some software and equipment, um, we applied for it, and because we were a compact community, and because the need that we have here, we were awarded twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety dollars. Um, as you know, the software he's bringing in has no cost associated with it, but this will allow us to buy a, um, large plot scanner and a large pot, plot printer, so we can actually print and scan the documents, um, and any of the supporting documentation that's required in-house, instead of paying to do that outside. In addition, if there's any training needs, or any forms that need to be changed, or anything like that, to accomplish this e- permitting, it'll all fall into that umbrella of the twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety dollars.
Alright, and that, um, as I stated to you, just so the board knows, that grant money came from that in the fall, when me, you, and Ed went to Newbury, and we met with the lieutenant governor, and we signed up for that grant.
So you could only apply for this grant if you were a compact community.
Right.
So because we have, um, been granted that status, we were able to apply.
And, um, I think I asked you this earlier, but, so it's public, you, we don't have, they don't give a, they just sent us out lists of what kind of grants are coming up under that, they don't?
They don't, you have to research them. They don't send out lists of grants.
Oh, wow.
Unless there's something big that's going on, like, they do like a big technology, technology initiative, that they'll send out sort of a blanket, you know, notice, but um, it's really up to us to look and see what grants are out there.
So from time to time, you'll scan it and see what you got, nothing right now that you, that you've seen?
I haven't checked lately.
Alright.
Nope, not since we did this.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wish we'd known that when the building inspector was in here, I, I, I think we should, uh, congratulate him for, uh, looking that up and, uh, follow up on it.
Well, if you'd like, we could probably have-
I can have him stop by at the next meeting for a few minutes.
Send him a letter.
Send him a letter.
Send him a letter.
Send him a letter.
Thank you.
Take up his time.
Okay, so now we have, um, finance director's time.
Yeah, I don't have anything tonight.
You've got a terrible cold that you need to get.
I had a list, and I didn't even print it, so I don't really remember what was on there.
Yes. Okay, so now we're gonna move to selectmen's time. So we'll start with Ed.
Well, uh, well, let me start by saying-
Oh, go ahead.
Um, Ed's gonna go over something, this pertains to the Washington Hall, and I only know because Claire Walsh had come in and saw me, and Ed donated his Red Sox tickets to the Washington Hall, so he'll carry on and go-
Yeah, there's a couple notes we got, all of us got, from Claire Walsh about, uh, thing for the historical society. We have one here, uh, the Groveland Historical Society presents the Monument Square Brass Quintet with members of the Merrimack Valley Phil- Philharmonic Orchestra, a concert in the park at Washington Hall, one oh-one Washington Street, Groveland, Sunday, July third at two P.M. Length of the concert ninety minutes and one intermission, come and enjoy some beautiful music, refreshments will be served, tickets are ten dollars and are available for purchase at the town clerk's office, the Langley Adams Library, society members in on the, on the day of the event at Washington Hall. Uh, quest- any questions, contact Claire Walsh, and I won't bother to read the number. Uh, then they, al- also for the benefit of the historical society, a Red Sox ticket raffle, uh, win two right field box seats, tickets for the, uh, Red Sox Yankees game at one o'clock on Saturday, September seventeenth. Drawing will be at, at one o'clock on the Groveland Day at the Pines, raffle tickets are ten dollars. Also available for purchase in the town clerk's office from society members, and may also be purchased at the concert in the park in Washington Hall on July third, state election at the Groveland Town Hall on September eighth, Groveland Day at the Pines on September tenth, Sundays at one to four at Washington Hall, one oh-one Washington Street, and, uh, Claire Walsh, twenty-four hours a day.
Well, thank you for donating the ticket, always greatly appreciated.
Well, we don't need to, we don't have.
Okay. Um, alright, so moving on, we have any other, anyone else have any on the selectman time? Bill, you got any?
No, in deference to, uh, Mr. Ambroski's, uh, ever-increasing sickness here, I, I pass.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
You all set, Dan? Selectman's time?
Well, I could talk forever, but I'll let it go today.
Okay. It is starting to get late. Alright, so we're gonna have, not too bad, oh yeah, it is bad.
Oh, it's over.
What?
It's over.
Um, adjournment at nine forty-five.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
I need signatures over here on the table, and then-
I'm gonna go pray, then I'll be back.
Yeah, I'm gonna-
Can you light my segment or I'll have a legal bill?